We will call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, May 10, 2022. If the clerk will call the roll, please.
Madam Mayor, if I may, will you allow me to state whether there's any...
Oh, okay, sorry.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anything to report out from the closed session?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Madam Mayor. Nothing to report tonight.
Okay. In which case, we'll let the clerk call the roll for the regular meeting.
Council members Aquino?
Here.
Chalum Chirwak?
Here.
Kozlowski is absent. Rodriguez?
Here.
And Howell?
Here. If you will all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is to apply the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do you have any agenda updates?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. There is additional information transmitted for agenda item number 18 on tonight's agenda, a copy of which has been provided to you previously, and they are also available on the table in the back.
Okay. And do you have any requests to speak from business from the floor? This is your opportunity to speak to the council about any item that is not on the agenda.
I don't have any speaker cards.
We don't have any cards? We don't see anybody coming forward. Okay, in which case...
Check online.
Yeah.
If there is anyone who's phoning in who'd like to speak from business from the floor, if you'll raise your hand by pressing star three, then we can call on you. I don't have any hands raised.
Okay. In which case, we'll move to scheduled presentations. And our first one is proclamation proclaiming May 15 to 21 of 2022 as National Police Week in the city of Folsom. If Lou Wright and Brian Lockhart from the police department would meet down front, and any other officers who want to come down?
Okay. This is the proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming May 15 to 21st, 2022 as National Police Officers Memorial Week. Excuse me, in the city of Folsom. Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, National Police Week pays special attention to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including 79 sworn members of the Folsom City Police Department, who work devotedly and selfishly on behalf of the citizens of Folsom regardless of the peril or hazards themselves, and whereas since the first known line of duty death in 1786, more than 23,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial, which was dedicated in 1991 in Washington, DC. And whereas in 2021, 458 federal, state, tribal, and local law enforcement officers died in the line of duty, this was an increase of 55% from the 295 officers killed in 2020. It is the highest total line of duty officer death since 1930, when there were 312 fatalities. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored, and the names of 619 officers newly engraved on the memorial will be formally dedicated during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 34th Annual Candlelight Vigil to be held on the evening of Friday, May 13, 2022. And whereas May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all the fallen officers and their families. Now therefore, I, Kerry Howell, Mayor of the city of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council, hereby proclaim the week of May 15 to 21, 2022 as National Police Week in the city of Folsom, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation. Proclaim this 10th day of May 2022. Thank you guys for everything you do on behalf of all of us.
Everyone's support, the community's support that we get in the city is really, really great for all of us. So, thank you.
And Christine Brainard, did you want to say a few words before this one?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Christine Brainard, Communications Director with the city of Folsom. And we're pleased to share with you plans for this year's City Works Day event. The city is pleased to host the annual City Works Day on Wednesday, May 18. The annual event is designed to inform our community about the many programs, services, and amenities that the city offers, and what it takes to keep our city running smoothly and safely. The event features fun activities for the young and young at heart. It's a chance to climb aboard a fire engine, honk the horn of a construction vehicle, or hop in the cab of a police car. The event is held annually during National Public Works Week, which is designed to recognize the important role of public works in our everyday lives as Folsom residents. This event has been held since 1998, and we're happy to bring it back after a few years of cancellations due to the pandemic. City Works Day is free, and our community is encouraged to attend. It's designed for all ages, but it's especially popular with our youngest residents. We're expecting field trips to attend, as well as visits from local preschools. It also draws regional media attention. We're expecting media coverage in local TV stations and radio stations, and we've teamed up with the Folsom Telegraph-style magazine, as well as parenting blog Macro and Kid, to promote the event to our community. We have a fresh new look for this year's event. You'll see this logo in local advertisements and social media and promotional materials, and the logo's designed to showcase the many services that we offer to our community. And now Jennifer Teo and Lindsay Taylor from the Public Works Department will talk a little bit more about this year's event.
At this year's event, the public can expect to see 32 booths from seven different city departments. Some popular booths returning this year include the street department's popcorn booth, a fire truck with ladder, the police department's mounted unit, and Kirby the talking robot. Brand new this year, we launched a coloring contest about recycling, engaging with all 12 Folsom elementary schools, and we received nearly 800 entries. The winners will be displayed at the event. Also new this year, our fleet department will be putting a truck up on lift so attendees can walk underneath. At another booth, you can make your own City of Folsom badge to wear for the day.
The enthusiasm from our staff and community members have been incredible. Everyone is so thrilled to have this event back. We encourage everyone to learn more about our city by attending City Works Week or City Works Day 2022 on Wednesday, May 18.
Sarah's going to be down with the proclamation.
Okay. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming May 15 through May 21, 2022 as National Public Works Week, and May 18, 2022 as City Works Day in the city of Folsom. Whereas public work services provided in the Folsom community are an integral part of our residents' everyday lives, and whereas informed residents are vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as traffic engineering, street maintenance, storm drainage, solid waste collection, recycling, and hazardous materials, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these operational services, and whereas the quality of these programs combined with their planning, design, and construction are vitally dependent on the skills of City of Folsom staff and officials, and whereas the Folsom City Charter and Folsom Municipal Code encourages broad, informed public participation in civic affairs, and whereas the city of Folsom seeks and encourages advice and input from the public on matters related to the city, and whereas the city of Folsom desires to provide information to the public about municipal operations, and whereas City Works Day is designed to inspire residents to discover the city of Folsom's wide variety of services and programs, and community members are invited to attend the event. Now for, on behalf of Kerry Howell, the mayor of the city of Folsom, and the Folsom City Council, we do hereby proclaim the week of May 15 through May 21, 2022, as National Public Works Week, and May 18, 2022, as City Works Day in the city of Folsom, and call upon community members to acquaint themselves with the complexities of providing public works, and to recognize the contribution that public works and other city departments make daily to the health, safety, and comfort of our residents. Proclaim this 10th day of May 2022. Lindsay Taylor and Jen Teo, thank you very much.
And the question that everybody wants to know, at Public Works Day, are you going to be able to get one of those organic recycling pails for your kitchen counter?
Thank you, and I really encourage people to go to that. That's a really fun event for both kids and adults. And we will now move on to the city manager's fiscal year 2021-22 third quarter financial report.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Stacy Tumani, Chief Financial Officer. Tonight I'll be presenting the third quarter report for fiscal year 21-22, including the projections for how we think the general fund will end this fiscal year. The first slide here is the general fund summary, and it compares the fiscal year 21-22 original budget to our year-end projections for the general fund. Revenues were budgeted at $92.5 million and are projected to end the year at $100.6 million. Revenues are up because sales tax and park recreation programming revenue has recovered faster than expected, and it's also due to development activity that's happening at a higher rate than anticipated this year. Expenses were budgeted at $92.5 million and are projected to end the year at $98.3 million. And we also have $2.2 million of ARPA funds approved to be expended during this budget cycle. When we consider all of this together, it results in a change to total fund balance of $4.4 million here, and that's an increase of $3.8 million over the current unassigned fund balance of $19.2, giving us $22.9 million or 23.4% as a percentage of expenditures. Your next slide here shows the city's unassigned fund balance going back to 2013, and that's in the blue columns here. And the red line is the fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. As we've noted many times, we dropped down in fiscal year 20 to that $13.8 million mark that was related to COVID-19, and we went below the 15% council policy at that point. With the recovery that we've experienced, we're now expecting to end the fiscal year at $22.98 million or 23.4% as a percentage of fiscal year 22's expenditures. I added this slide here. It's a summary of fund balance totals for the general fund. And then we have the risk management fund and also our compensated leaves fund, and these two are internal service funds. The city used the risk management and compensated leaves fund as a short-term budget tool so that we could lessen the impact of the COVID-19 economic downturn on the general fund. However, as the economy has recovered over the past year, the fund balance has only been replaced in the general fund. This chart shows the pre-COVID balances for all three funds. We had $17.4 million in the general fund, $9.1 million in the risk management fund, and just under $1 million in the compensated leaves fund. And if we look to the total change, we added $5.6 million over the last two years to the general fund, but we have still not recovered almost $4 million in the risk management fund and over $1 million in the compensated leave fund. So our year-end projections for all three funds combined is $28 million. It's a change over the last two to three years of only $800,000. So I just think it's important to look at that because we typically just look at the recovery in the general fund. It's been a fairly large recovery, but it's been at the expense of these other two internal service funds. And that's a product of how the general fund works. When revenues exceed expenditures, it does roll into fund balance. It doesn't transfer out into these other funds. But right now, there's no plan for replenishment of the other two funds, and it's just important to acknowledge that that was sacrificed here in these two funds in order to put the general fund back where it is now. This slide is the major revenue sources in the general fund. The final results for fiscal year 21 are in the left column. In the middle, we have the current budget for fiscal year 22. And then on the right, we have the projected year-end amount, and this includes the use of ARPA funds of $2.2 million, for a total year-end amount of $102.8 million. Both property tax and sales tax are projected to come in over budget. Property tax, right up here, by about $500,000, and sales tax by about $2.5 million. That increase in sales tax, as I already mentioned, was a quicker recovery from the impacts of COVID than was originally anticipated. We had budgeted very conservatively for this line item due to all the volatility in this revenue source a year ago when we were producing this budget. TOT is projected to come in just short of budget at $1.9 million. We have charges for services also seeing recovery, coming in at about $16 million by the end of the fiscal year. And this recovery includes parks and recreation program revenues. You'll recall that we budgeted cautiously again in this revenue category and in the corresponding parks and recreation expenditure budget, and the intention was to allow additional funding in the parks and recreation budget if revenues exceeded expectations. And so, we have been able to move forward with that plan this year, and you will see expenditures up as a result when we look at the expenditures slide. Revenues are also up in this category due to activity and community development related to the plant area. That revenue is mostly offset by increased contract expenses for inspections that are related to that development activity. Licenses and permits are expected to come in at $12.4 million, and that's also due to an increase in the pace of building permit activity. Continuing on to the major expenditure categories in the general fund, we have the same columns as earlier slides. Fiscal year 21's actual results on the left, our current budget in the middle, and then the projections for 21-22 towards the right. We are projecting fiscal year 22 will end the year at $98.3 million, and that includes the $2.2 million of ARPA expenditures. As we look at the year-end projections compared to the budget, salaries are projected to be pretty much right at budget. It's a combination of increased overtime in the fire department, offset by savings in nearly every other department due to vacancies and positions that we held frozen throughout the year. Operations and maintenance is projected to end the year at $24 million or $2.8 million over budget. Much of this is related to community development contracts for the plant area, as I just mentioned, was offset by increased revenue in that charges for services category. And we also have increased program costs for parks and recreation revenue over what was budgeted because they also had an increase in their revenues. And then capital outlay, the third line is projected to be slightly over budget due to projects that were budgeted in the prior year, but will be expended in this fiscal year. When we look at the expenditures sorted by department, we see that most departments, and this is the over/under budget column, are projected to end the year under budget. Fire, which is just more than halfway down here, is projected to be up over their budget by about $2.4 million, and this is mostly due to overtime costs. A portion of that will be reimbursed by CalOES, and it's also due to increased requirements for vehicle maintenance expenses. Community development is the next one right under fire. It's projected to be over budget due to increased contract costs, and as we mentioned, that was offset by increased revenues that passed through for these contracts. And everyone else is pretty much expected to be under budget by the end of the year. Our internal service fund is our risk management fund. This is the fund that's used to account for the cost of the city's insurance programs. This year, we had another planned decrease in revenue. That means that we have less money coming into the fund than what it costs to pay for these programs. You see this here in the projection where we have $17.9 million coming in as revenue, but we're expending over $19 million. Doing this allowed us to keep insurance expenses in the general fund stable as we went through the economic downturn. And with the plan used to fund balance again this year, the fund will end this year with projected unrestricted net position of about $5.3 million. This fund is working as it is intended. It's minimizing the impacts on the general fund, but we will need to begin to replenish this fund so that it can continue to be a stabilizer of insurance costs for future budget years. Some of the big drivers of expenses in this fund are our active and retiree employee health costs. The big increase from year to year was in our workers' comp insurance, and then liability insurance went up by about $300,000 compared to the prior year. As we look at our enterprise funds, the water fund is projected to end the year with program revenues right at budget, $17.9 million, and operating expenses are projected to be at $15.7 million. Capital expenses are projected at $4 million, and that will leave the water fund with about $19.3 million in working capital reserves, and that leaves them in good shape to prepare for future capital projects. Waste water fund is projected to have program revenues of $8.6 million, and operating expenses are projected to be slightly below budget at $5.4 million. Capital expenses will be at about $2 million by the end of the year, leaving working capital in this fund at $17.9 million. And our last slide here is for solid waste. Program revenues are projected to be at $19 million by the end of the fiscal year, with operating expenses at $15.4 million, capital expenses of $2 million, and this will leave working capital in the solid waste fund at $8 million. And this is a nice improvement from what we had seen in previous years for the working capital for solid waste. And that concludes my quarterly financial report for you this evening.
Any questions or comments?
I'll just make a... I just want to reiterate this point. So, sales tax revenue is coming in better than projected because you were very conservative with your projections.
True.
But in past meetings, we have talked about the trend line for sales tax revenue continues to flatten just because of the change in habits of online shopping versus brick and mortar, buying experiences rather than goods, that sort of thing, and that is not anticipated to change.
Yes, that's true. And in the budget presentation that'll be coming up right after this, I'll go into a little more detail about how that is continuing.
Okay, thank you.
Although, there was an article recently that Amazon is showing a decline in online sales because people are going back to shopping in stores, so that was a good thing. Yeah. I have no questions or comments.
Okay, anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. In which case, we will move on to item four, which is Presentation of the City Manager's Fiscal Year 2022-23 Proposed Operating Capital Budgets for the city of Folsom.
Thank you, Mayor Howell. Tonight, we are indeed bringing you the Preliminary Fiscal Year 22-23 Budget and Capital Improvement Plan. As you likely know, our city budget process first starts with meetings between me, our budget team, and the city's department heads over many, many weeks. We look at what we think revenues are going to be. We filter through literally hundreds of budget requests from all the departments. We look at what big capital projects we want to tackle and how much funding we have available for them. And then we whittle all of that down to a preliminary budget and capital improvement plan that we bring to you as the city council. This has been a very challenging process, and I will be frank that this is, once again, a very Spartan-constrained budget. We are once again deferring important needs in every single department for possible consideration for the next year, or the year after that, or the year after that, and meanwhile, other needs emerge. We are once again using one-time funds to plug gaps and not able to fill in behind those funds to replenish them. In the budget development process, we left over $22 million in very valid, reasonable requests behind, unfortunately. That included about 40 requested positions from city departments that we could not fund. To be clear, those weren't icing-on-the-cake requests from departments. They were requests by department heads to meet basic operational needs. As we've discussed with you several times now, the city of Folsom remains fiscally sound, thanks to prudent and conservative planning by this city council and your predecessors, but expenses are growing at a faster rate than revenues, and that's resulting in a projected structural deficit within the next few years. The structural deficit is not here, right here and now, and I don't want anyone at this dais or anyone in this room to leave the impression, leave here with the impression that we're in a deficit at this moment. We can continue to cover expenses in our constrained state, but the structural deficit is coming, and we're trying to communicate and plan early and often. As you know, with your support and direction, we are embarking on a community engagement effort to educate our residents about this projected shortfall, learn more from them how they prioritize and value various city services, and talk more about potential solutions, including the possibility of a measure to modestly increase our sales tax rate to be placed on the November 2022 ballot. Folsom's sales tax rate currently stands at just the base rate of 7.25 plus .5 for Measure A transportation, for a total rate of 7.75%. If voters approved an additional half cent, the sales tax revenue received by the city would increase by about $11 million a year, and if voters approved a full cent increase, that would increase to $22 million annually. No decisions have been made on that measure and won't be until likely later in June, but we need to continue to move in the direction of exploring the possibility. Exploring the possibility means hearing from our residents. We will be asking our residents to complete a simple survey available in hard copy form or online, so watch for that coming soon. And finally, I want to specifically thank Chief Financial Officer Stacy Tumani and Financial Services Manager Terry Hemley for their tireless efforts on this budget, and also my intrepid and talented executive management team for their many contributions. And with that, I will turn it over to Stacy.
Thank you. Good evening again. Stacy Tumani, Chief Financial Officer, and tonight I'm presenting the city manager's proposed fiscal year 22-23 operating and capital budgets. To begin, we'll review fiscal year 21-22's budgeted and projected expenditures. The original budget was $92.5 million. We're projecting $98.3 million to be the total expenditures as we finish out this fiscal year. And for fiscal year 22-23, we are proposing total appropriations of $102.4 million. It's about a $9.9 million increase over the fiscal year 21-22 original budget. If we compare it to the fiscal year 21-22 projection of $98.3, it's about a $4 million increase over where we're currently operating. We began this year's budget preparation similar to in years past. We start with projecting next year's revenues, and that projection is at $102.4 million. It's a $9.9 million increase over last year. That increase is a result of conservative budgeting in fiscal year 21-22 when we were right in the middle of the pandemic, combined with tax and non-tax revenue recovering from the economic downturn sooner than we had projected. It is important to note that this increase over the prior year's budget is a direct result of recovery from the pandemic to revenue levels that we had been at before COVID. It's not an increase in the revenue trend that will continue into future years. For the expenditure budget, we're working toward that $102.4 million in revenue. We start with last year's appropriation of $92.5 million, and then we added in $3.6 million to reinstate the cuts that we made to the last two operating budgets. Those were made to minimize the impacts of COVID on the general fund, but they were temporary cuts, and so they were added in first. That brings us up to expenditures of $96.1 million after we add in that category. The next was to look at our current level of service and the cost increases related to those. We had increase in labor costs due to MOU agreements, our regular annual salary and benefit increases, cost increases for services and supplies that have really been affected by inflation, and we also have new mandated costs. That added another $4 million to the budget and puts us at $100 million of expenditures just to maintain our current level of service. The total revenue estimate is $102.4 million, so with $100 million already spoken for at this point, it left the city manager with only about $2.3 million for new budget additions. The proposed additions to the budget are listed here on this slide in the order of cost, and all the additions proposed here were based on priorities, mandates, and needs. The budget committee, as Elaine already mentioned, had over $25 million of new requests from department heads submitted for this budget cycle, and that $25 million included 53 requested new positions. But the city manager only had $2.3 million to allocate so less than 10% of requests could be fulfilled, which means all the remaining needs will have to be deferred to another year. In total, this list here adds up to the $2.3 million. The first on the list is seven new firefighter positions. This will partially staff the new fire station in the Folsom plant area. 10 new firefighters are needed to fully staff that station. It's in the planning stages now, and so we are proposing seven. The second item is $425,000 for three additional firefighter positions. These are currently... They were currently hired as limited-term positions, and this proposed funding here would make them permanent positions going forward. The third item is $255,000 added to the fire department's capital budget, and that would help them to fund the purchase... capital budget, and that would help them to fund the purchase of a Type One fire engine. They already have some capital funding in their budget, but this is needed in order to reach that mark to purchase the engine. The next three items are police department positions related to increasing service requirements in the Plan Area. The first is an additional police officer, the second is an additional dispatcher, and the third is a second animal control officer position. The last three on the list here is eighty-six thousand dollars for GIS, which stands for Geographic Information System Contract Staffing. We've been using that model to help with GIS work across the city. We also needed to add fifty-one thousand dollars for election costs for the fiscal year 22 election, and then we've added fifty thousand dollars for additional funding in the city attorney's office for outside counsel. Many of these items are related to increased service level in the Plan Area. That totals about one point four million of this two point three, and this is funded by increases in property tax revenue due to that new development. And the proposal here, as far as the staffing plan, follows the staffing plan that was originally anticipated for that area. There's also a couple of items listed at the bottom here that will be paid for outside of the general fund, but they are included in the budget. The first one is a maintenance worker. It will be funded by CFDs and lighting and landscape funds, and the last on the list there are vehicles and public works, a boom truck, a patch truck, and two flatbed trucks that'll be funded by Measure A and gas tax funds.
Stacy, I have a quick question about this, the prior slide. Are those benefited positions, or is this the pay?
These will be full benefited, full-time positions.
Okay.
The cap, the number captures salary and benefits.
Okay, thank you.
So, all of the additions that we just went over on the previous slide are included in this figure here, one hundred and two point four million in total, and I'll go through each category here. Salary and benefit expense will increase by six million compared to fiscal year 22. This increase is a combination of a few elements. First is the addition of the new public safety positions that were just noted on the last slide. Second is the replenishment of the budget for temporary staff that was cut from the Parks and Recreation budget in the prior year due to COVID restrictions. And then the third part is just the regular increases due to labor agreements and regular salary and benefit increases. The second line is operations and maintenance. The budget is proposed to increase by three point one million, or fourteen percent from the prior year. This is due to the operating budget in Parks and Recreation being added back in this year after being cut during the pandemic. We are also increasing the contribution to the city's Risk Management Fund back up to pre-COVID levels so that we can minimize using any more of that very limited fund balance. And this also includes a five hundred thousand dollar increase in contract costs and community development for increased construction inspection services, and this will be paid for by increased engineering fee revenue that has been included in the revenue figures. Capital outlay is up this year after replenishing the budget for the purchase of public safety vehicles, and this line also includes the trucks that are, will be funded by Measure A or gas tax that were noted to be going into the Public Works Department. Also in this line is a fifty thousand dollar increase to bring the IT budget back up to where it was pre-COVID. We have debt service going down. We have added no new debt, and two loans were recently paid off in the prior year. I will note that there still is one frozen position included in this budget for cost savings, and that's the Assistant City Manager. And I also wanted to note that this budget does not give any increases across the board for operations and maintenance in departments. We were often able to do that in years before COVID, so not only were there no across-the-board increases offered in this budget, we still have the two point three percent decrease that happened in fiscal year 2021, and has not been reinstated except for just very specific increases that you've seen as proposed items. Also, it's important to note that this budget does include the prepayment of the city's CalPERS obligation again this year.
Tracy, I have one quick question on the previous one. The statement you made at the end, O and M is increasing fourteen percent.
Right.
It is, you are putting it back before the COVID numbers, and you are not giving any further increase, that two point five, can you clarify that?
Sure. So, included in there was about two million dollars of cuts that we made to the Parks and Recreation operating budget, so that, that's part of that three million. We also are increasing the contribution to the city's Risk Fund, and so that's included in there. The Risk Fund was, is the Internal Service Fund that we've talked about where we purposely transferred less revenue than we knew we were going to have in expenditures, and we were using up that fund balance in there. So, that number is now going back up so that revenues will match expenditures. So, that increases our expenditures in this line item over what we had last year, because that was a savings. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so this slide displays the General Fund proposed appropriations sorted by department. Year over year, we have that nine point nine million dollar increase. The Fire Department is up two point five million dollars over last year. That's the addition of the ten new positions. Also, additional capital funding for part of the purchase of that engine, and it also includes additions to salary and benefits per the labor agreements. Police is up by one point nine million. This includes their three new proposed positions and additions to salary and benefits for, per their labor agreements. Community Development is up by seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. That's mostly due to the increase in contract costs that will be offset by increased engineering fee revenue, and then they have increased staffing costs. Public Works is up for, we've included that boom truck, patch truck, and staff vehicles in here, but it'll be funded by Measure A and gas tax, and they have increased staffing costs as well. General Government, which is all of your administrative departments, is up for new budget additions that were on that list, the election costs, the fifty thousand dollar increase for outside counsel, and the GIS consultant support, and the regular increases to staff costs there. Cultural Recreation is up, and this is mostly due to the replenishment of the cuts that were in the prior year budget related to COVID. Debt Service is down due to synthetic turf and Secog loan for Johnny Cash Trail that have both been paid off. And then in the other category here, this is the transfer that we were just talking about to the Risk Fund for Retiree Health. It's been put back up to a sustainable pre-COVID level. Also, we've taken out the savings that we had in the prior year budget for frozen positions. The way that that was displayed in the budget was it was an offset to this expense, so when that's been removed, the amount here for other expenditures goes up. And the last factor here is an increase in contract costs for our share of the county's new property tax system. That was a mandated expense that was added into other. Here you have the pie chart detailing out this appropriation by department. It's very close to the percentages that you saw in the fiscal year 22 budget, and we continue to propose a budget that maintains that balance of expenditures by function. This is the chart of authorized positions. As I mentioned, this proposed budget includes the addition of fourteen authorized positions in the General Fund, ten firefighters, three positions in the police department, and the one maintenance worker that'll be funded by Community Facilities Districts and Lighting and Landscape Districts. There are also three new positions proposed in Water and Waste Water, two that were anticipated in the rate study, that's an administrative technician, and a water utility worker, and one that will be funded by regional sanitation for the city to continue to administer their billing. We do that right now, and we're entering into an agreement to have them reimburse us for that, and this position will be funded by that. And then on the third column there, under Solid Waste, is an additional position for a solid waste refuse driver. As we take a look at revenues, this slide is the fiscal year 21-22 revenue budget and the proposed figures for 22-23. We're projecting total revenue, including those transfers in from other sources, to be at the one hundred and two point four million. Property taxes are expected to remain stable and stay on trend with what we've been projecting. It'll be an increase of about three point five million dollars over the prior year. Sales tax is estimated to come in about three point three million dollars over last year's budget. This increase is a combination of comparing back to a very conservative budget in fiscal year 22. We've now seen some recovery from the economic downturn, so that has been factored into the 22-23 estimate, and then there's been a moderate two point five percent growth factor also included in this projection. Transient occupancy tax from our hotels is projected at two point two million for fiscal year 22-23. Charges for services are proposed at eleven point seven million. This increase is mostly due to Parks and Recreation program revenue moving back to their pre-COVID levels. We saw that recovery happen already in fiscal year 21-22, so it just brings the budget up to current operating levels. And then in licenses, permits, and VLF, we're proposing revenue of thirteen point two million. It's a one point eight million dollar increase from fiscal year 21-22, and it's mostly due to continued high levels of building permit activity, a recovery of the business license revenue since that was waived in the prior year, and also an increase in VLF revenue, which goes up when development and our assessed values go up. This chart here shows the trends of our major tax revenues. We have property tax, the property tax trend on the top here in blue, moving up at a consistent pace. And then we have sales tax, which we've seen was trending at the same level of property tax, but now has flattened out and is moving forward on a trajectory of more about two and a half percent growth versus the six percent that we see in property tax. This chart here reflects the city's unassigned fund balance by year in the dark blue columns, and then the unassigned fund balance as a percentage of expenditures is displayed by the red line. And I expanded this chart back to two thousand and six because I think it's interesting to look at the bigger picture for our fund balance. In two thousand and six, before the Great Recession, we had sixteen million dollars in unassigned fund balance, that's the cash, but it was twenty-six point six percent as a percentage of our expenditures. As we've moved forward, and we've seen recovery from both the Great Recession and now coming out of COVID, we are projecting to be at twenty-two point nine eight million dollars, so it's higher cash-wise than we were in two thousand and six, but as a percentage of expenditures, we're still below our high point. We'll be at twenty-two point four percent as a percentage, and in fiscal year two thousand and six, we were at twenty-six point six percent. And with the trend that we are on, adding to fund balance at the same pace as the expenditure growth will be difficult, so we'll likely be seeing this red line tipping down and starting to decrease as a percentage of fund balance as we move forward. Moving on to the Enterprise Fund budgets, we'll go over the projected revenues and proposed appropriations for the Water, Waste Water, and Solid Waste Funds. The proposed budget for the Water Enterprise Fund includes nineteen point two million dollars of program revenues. The proposed appropriation for operating expenses is fifteen point eight million, and three point seven for capital expenses. That will leave this fund with projected working capital of twenty-one million dollars. For Waste Water, we're projecting eleven million dollars of program revenues, proposed appropriations of six point two million for operations, and three point eight million for capital expenses, and that will leave this fund with projected working capital of sixteen point seven million.
Do you get on the slide?
And for Solid Waste, the proposed budget for this Enterprise Fund includes twenty million dollars of program revenues. It's about a twenty-five percent increase over fiscal year 21-22's budget. It's mostly due to the rate increases that have now come into effect, and also a projection for increased revenues with additional homes being built. The proposed appropriations are eighteen point five million for operations and six point four million for capital expenses for vehicle replacement, and that will leave this fund with a projected working capital of six point six million. And as I mentioned before, a much better financial condition than we were seeing in recent years. Now, we'll take a look at the Proposed Capital Improvement Plan budget for fiscal year 22-23. It is included in the documents that you received tonight. Here we have an overview of what's included in the Proposed Capital Improvement Plan. This is not everything, but it is the, the bigger line items. The first column is what is included in this budget proposal. These are either amounts that are adding to an existing project, or it's a brand-new one. Some of the highlights are continuing with the Capital Southeast Connector project, the fire station in the Folsom Plan area, Neighborhood Park Number Three in the Folsom Plan area. We also have some sewer projects, Benevento Family Park, trails in the Folsom Plan area, street overlay and pavement management, pump station, drainage, more sewer projects, drainage projects, and then also, as we get towards the end, starting the planning process for Neighborhood Park Two in the Plan Area. The total project budget is, adds in anything new in this budget proposal, and so this will be the, the total approved budget for each of these project at this point.
Tracy, quick point on that one. Number two, Folsom Plan Area Fire Station Thirty-four, and some of those trials, we are collecting impact fund, and that is probably going to be funded through that bucket.
Yes, that is true, and I'll pop onto this next slide here. These are the sources of funds. So, you were just a slide ahead of me here. Enterprise funds will be paying for about five million dollars of this. Grants and loans, one point one million, and then impact fees, twenty-four million dollars, and that's where you're seeing the, the fire station here is included in this, twelve point nine million dollars. And then other funding sources of four point eight million, and this includes funds such as the General Fund, Measure A, or gas tax. That was a summary of the Capital Improvement Plan. Here you have your proposed appropriations by fund in total for all city funds. The proposed budget includes one hundred and two point four million for the General Fund, fifty-two point five million for Enterprise Funds, thirteen point seven million for special revenue funds, ten point seven million for debt service funds, twenty-nine million for capital project funds, twenty-one point seven million for internal service funds, and eighteen point five million for fiduciary funds, for total appropriation of two hundred and forty-eight point six million. Moving on to the final section of this budget presentation is our five-year budget forecast. As we look at the forecast for the next five years, the blue bars here are our projected revenue trend for all revenue types in the General Fund, and then the dark red line that goes across the top is our projected expenditures for the next five years. When I displayed this chart in a presentation earlier this year, we were projecting out to fiscal year 27, and we had a two point four million dollar funding gap. I've now added fiscal year 28 to this chart, and you can see the gap is projected to grow to about three point four million dollars annually. This does not include any of the unfunded needs that we've discussed in previous presentations that are estimated at about twenty million dollars a year. However, the projection does account for some additional expenses related to providing services to the Folsom Plan area, so that is included in the expenses, but it's also included in the revenues, and it's that offsetting property tax revenue that that development is creating. So, this model anticipates that growth in property tax to fund the required increases in services to serve that portion of the city, and then we're left with this gap. It's eight point three million dollars over the next five years if you add up all of these shortfalls. We do have some major budgetary concerns coming up in the next five years. The first is that chart that we just went over. The five-year forecast predicts an upcoming structural deficit. We have expenses that are higher than, than the revenues coming in to pay for them, and this is happening because the cost to provide our current level of service is growing at a faster pace than our revenues. The second item here on this slide that's a major concern is that although we're meeting all of our current obligations, there are millions of dollars, it's estimated at twenty million dollars annually, of unfunded or underfunded needs that the city has been deferring year after year, and we will be adding to that list again this year. These needs don't go away when they're deferred, they continue to accumulate, and the cost to pay for them continues to grow. Number three on this list is that flattening trend that we're experiencing in our sales tax revenue. The source of revenue has been about twenty-seven percent of our General Fund, and it's a big impact on our ability to provide services if sales tax revenue growth doesn't keep up with the increase in cost to provide services. Number four, we have a lot of uncertainty as to what our future CalPERS contribution requirements will be in the future. Changes in actuarial assumptions affect our contributions, and right now, it's, whoops, especially the performance of the financial markets will potentially be affecting our required contributions. This could mean annual increases of over a million dollars or more to our General Fund in future budgets. The fifth item on the list is that we have a depletion of our one-time funds. We used reserves from the Risk Fund and the Compensated Lease Fund during the past two years to minimize the impacts of COVID on the General Fund. This would typically be a recessionary tool, and we used it that way, but then the city would want to replenish these funds as the economy recovers so that the accounts can be used in the future when we're faced with, with the next recession. And right now, we find ourselves with a recovering economy, but no additional funding available to allow us to replenish those reserves. Number six, we have little bit, little ability to stay competitive in the region when it comes to employee compensation. We're, we're a full-service city, which means that we provide services, and our biggest expense is paying our employees to provide those services. And the city is in a situation right now where our neighboring jurisdictions have more financial resources at their disposal than we do, and that allows them to provide better compensation packages than we can responsibly afford to do. And as our financial situation becomes even more constrained in the next few years, this inability to afford to compete with our neighbors will become an even bigger issue as it relates to recruitment and retention of quality candidates. Number seven, we have an ongoing need for consistent funding sources to fund the city's Capital Replacement Fund, and also the need to establish and pay into an IT infrastructure fund. These are both examples of best practices of setting money aside for renovation and replacement of the city's major infrastructure and buildings, but there's currently no room in the budget to contribute to these types of funds. And then we have to keep in mind that there are growing service level needs in the Plan Area. These will require additions to future budgets. We will continue We will continue to see property tax growth that was planned and anticipated to be used for those additional service requirements. And and we can't use that growth in the property tax to support our current general fund operations.
Tracy, I have one quick question on the previous slide. Number six, the ability to stay competitive, do we have some basis for that one as a research or something has done? It's important. We have to have the bright and, you know, excellent employees and happy employees as well. If somebody else is giving more, guess what? They're going to leave. Do we have any numbers to support that number six?
I don't want to answer on behalf of our HR manager or the city manager.
We are seeing certainly trends lately of employees departing for better compensation packages in other jurisdictions, sometimes right next door to us. And as we look ahead, that's only going to, that gap is going to keep increasing. And that is very discouraging and frustrating to lose good employees that we've trained only to lose them to other agencies. So yes, we are seeing that for sure. If I'm speaking out of term for the HR manager, you just, you know, get me in line here, but we are definitely seeing that in our departments right now.
You are. Okay, thank you. That is why I was asking, when I was going through this, almost seventy-three, seventy to seventy-five percent of our general budget is going to salaries and benefits. It's a big chunk. So we are still underpaying and still we are allocating almost seventy-five percent of the general budget. This council has to seriously consider how we can fix that. That's the only reason I was asking that. Thank you.
Thank you. In summary, the city of Folsom remains fiscally sound, but we do find ourselves in a situation of expenses growing at a faster rate than revenues. And this results in the projected deficits as we move forward. The goal this year was to repair a structurally sound and balanced budget that maintains our core essential services. We also wanted to maintain the historical balance of expenditures by function. And we wanted to provide a balanced budget that does not draw upon the city's unassigned, unreserved general fund balance. And although this budget checks all of those boxes, it does leave millions of dollars of capital projects, infrastructure improvements, equipment repair and replacement, staffing needs and public safety and other departments, and many other items unfunded for yet another year. As far as next steps, this was the presentation of the proposed budget. And your first chance to adopt will be at your next meeting on May twenty-fourth at the first public hearing. And with that, I will conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Any questions of Elaine or Stacy?
No questions.
Stacy, I know you're somewhat limited in in the specifics you can give about sales tax revenue and which industry or, you know, generates the most. But we did have a conversation at one of our strategic planning meetings a couple of months ago about trying to be a little bit more strategic. So for example, as as a developer is starting to attract tenants, or let's say the shop's at Folsom Ranch, if we can give them some information about, you know, a chicken, chicken fast food place is going to, you know, generally brings in this much sales tax revenue versus a coffee place. Have we made any progress in that area? But with the ability to do that, to share some of that information, not that that maybe would, you know, they're going to do what they're going to do, but but perhaps if 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 all things considered, you know, everything else is equal, maybe knowing that one over the other will provide a greater sales tax revenue to the city. So I'm just wondering if we've made any progress there.
Sure, we do have a list that that is public information of our top twenty-five producers of sales tax. And so that could be something that could be looked at to see what types of industry are producing the highest amount of sales tax. We can also look at restaurants in general and versus apparel or items like that. It just can't be specific to a a name of a chain or anything along those lines.
Okay. So when you when you do those inquiries, are you looking at just Folsom or are you looking at, say, you know, throughout California, the businesses that generate the most sales tax that maybe we don't necessarily have that we need? Is that something that you look at?
That could be something that I could ask our consultant to look into if if they're able to share that information.
Because it would be great to have an In-N-Out Burger and a Chick-fil-A on both sides, but that's not possible, so.
Good. I have one quick question, I think. I know I was holding my questions, but I asked, you showed me the next slide. If you can go to the slide three, ma'am, slide three or four.
Three?
Yeah, I think four. Yeah, I know I did ask this one in our agenda review. I just want to clarify that. I know this town is very particular on public safety. You all see it. Anybody asks anywhere in the region, what is that one thing draws to Folsom? It's safe neighborhoods. I love my firefighters there, but when you look at the numbers for public, there is only one police officer we are adding, right? We talked about it. Can you explain to the, you know, public also, in addition, what you are explaining? We were adding the police officers as a part of Folsom Plan area especially.
Yes, thank you. So we've been following the staffing plan that was originally laid out as we were planning for development in the Plan area. And so one of the first staffing allocations was for police officers and then positions in community development. Because we knew that that was going to have the impact first. So back in the eighteen, nineteen budget, there was enhancements for staffing. It included three police officers, a senior civil engineer, a principal planner, and a building plan checker. And so that that was where we knew the impacts would come first. So this is now the second phase. The fire station is coming online and so now it's time to staff that. And then it calls for these additional public safety positions at this time as well. We're just following the plan as it goes along with the needs. There'll be firefighters along the line when the second fire station comes.
Yeah.
And if I could just add on to that, and maybe you could go back to the comparison pie charts, which show that, you know, in in following this prescribed staffing process that was kind of predictated for us, you know, we're still staying in the nearly identical slices of the pie in terms of the appropriations.
That's all I have. I know I know you mentioned, oh, sorry. I said that's all, but I'm again asking. I know you briefly mentioned, I'm going to, you know, talk to my colleagues also here publicly. One position was not filling, which is the Assistant City Manager. In my mind, that is a very critical, I know, we talked with the city manager also. Probably this council can, you know, find a leeway in this budget to bring that very critical role for this town, especially to focus heavy on the economic development side where we can generate more funding or revenue. I just want to make that comment. We'll figure it out in next meeting how it is going to be. It's a comment rather than a question. Thank you.
So all all of those things are obviously up for discussion as as you move forward. For the council's information, filling the Assistant City Manager position would be a cost of about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. So just, that's food for thought.
And I and I just want to remind everybody that we've done this in the past. And it's it's great to come up with an even longer list of things that we don't currently have funding for, that we'd like to pay for. But when you make that request, you might want to give us some suggestions about where you want to cut that money from.
Absolutely. I'm more than happy in next meeting. This is our first time like you guys.
Okay, departments, YK is gunning for you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll continue this discussion at the next meeting. And that moves us to the consent calendar. Do you have anybody that would like to pull anything from consent?
If nobody pulls anything, I'll move by through seventeen.
Okay, do we have?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Zaccino?
Yes.
Chelan Charla?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes. Okay. Due to the fact that Councilmember Kozlowski is still on his way, and I'm going to apologize for this, but I I think it's important that he be there for all of item eighteen. So we're we're going to take item nineteen before item eighteen. Mr. Kozlowski should be here very shortly.
And Madam Mayor, if I may just make a comment on item nineteen. After conferring with the city attorney, I'm actually going to recuse myself from this item. Both members of coal partners are longtime family friends, but one of the partners is a longtime client of mine at our family insurance business. So I'm going to recuse myself, so I will be back in the.
You'll be leaving the room.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Howell, members of the City Council, Pam Johns, Community Development Director. And I am giving a presentation for Steve Banks, who's the project planner this evening. He is not able to be here. I'm going to give a brief presentation on the project, Folsom Corporate Center Apartments, which includes a general plan amendment, a rezone, a plan and a plan development permit modification along with the environmental review. Tonight, we also have the applicant team here to answer questions as well as the environmental team to help supplement any detailed knowledge that I may or may not have for you. So the proposal is to is for the development of a two hundred and fifty-three unit market rate apartment project. There are two lots, about twelve acres total that are within the Folsom Corporate Center campus or project. That's where we have the existing Kaiser, Micron, and Safe Credit Union projects. The land use change would be from industrial to multifamily high density and the zoning from limited manufacturing and business professional to an apartment project. The plan development permit addresses issues associated with development and design that weren't necessarily anticipated when we had the the corporate apartment project. So here's a map showing the general proximity of the Folsom Corporate Center campus with existing development and the two lots, one and six, are the location of the proposed multifamily apartment projects. We have vacant sites in there. One is under construction now for the dialysis center and another for approved and not yet developed for the Revel Senior Assisted Living Project. This exhibit shows the site plans in a little more detail and context. So Iron Point Road along the north, and then there's a private loop road. And both of the proposed apartment projects sites would come off of the private loop road, not directly from Iron Point Road. You can see Lot Six is just under five acres. That would include a hundred units with four three-story buildings that include tuck-under garages and a clubhouse building. Lot One is a little larger, seven point one acres with a hundred and fifty-three units. That one has seven buildings that are again three-story with a tuck-under garage and a clubhouse. So each project is, you know, mutually exclusive, but there are some efficiencies in developing them together and creating more of a mixed-use project area. I mentioned earlier the general plan amendment. The land use designations are currently industrial because they were part of the the office complex. And then the zoning was also a combination throughout this area of limited manufacturing and business professional. Both of those land use designations would have to go to multifamily, high-density slash apartment. And the proposed project at twelve acres and two hundred and fifty-three units is about twenty-one point two acres. And that is within the twenty to thirty unit density range of of the project site. The staff report goes into a lot of detail about the analysis of this proposed change. The community benefit, as we've outlined from our staff analysis, is is really primarily related to the housing supply and housing type. And this is on the heels of our Housing Element Update where we identified a significant, you know, regional housing need allocation in the city for a range of affordability. While this is a proposed market rate project, we expect that the rents would be coming in really likely in the moderate income level. And so you can see here the recent regional housing needs allocation numbers in this column here. And then we start counting our progress towards those units in two thousand and twenty-one. And you can see we have a long way to go over the next eight-year period. As we've discussed previously, we don't typically have a problem in Folsom meeting our above-moderate-income households. Those are typically our single-family homes. And then our multifamily homes typically provide moderate and lower-income households. And you, we've been to you many times in the recent past with affordable and mixed-income projects. This is a this is a market rate project that's being being proposed. The plan development permit, we analyzed and there's details in the report about how the project compares to development standards citywide and and within the project site. They're asking for two exceptions from those development standards. One is a landscape buffer width along Iron Point Road for Lot Six that abuts Iron Point Road. Instead of having a minimum of thirty feet, they're asking for an average of thirty feet, which would allow them to bring some buildings closer, as close as twenty or twenty-four feet. And then some will be set back more than forty feet. So the average would be be thirty. And then they're also asking for additional monument signs, just different advertising or different identification needs than what would be required for a larger, you know, office complex. Here are some examples of the building elevations. And the report outlines a lot of detail about the compliance with both the multifamily design guidelines that are citywide and the design guidelines that apply to the the corporate center offices that are there with the intent of establishing compatibility with the the design of the surrounding buildings. So this is showing a sixteen-plex building. Here's an example of the larger twenty-six complex building. And in some of these, you can see where the garage tuck-unders are located. Here's a clubhouse exhibit showing where the clubhouse is located in Lot One that's set back further from Iron Point Road. And then the clubhouse elevation is a separate building for Lot Six that's located along Iron Point Road. The traffic analysis that was done looked at not just project impacts, but, you know, the delta between what would have been assumed on the project site and determined that that no significant impacts to the level of service or vehicle miles traveled. We spent time both with the applicant and traffic consultant and the Traffic Safety Committee talking about access and circulation. And there were recommendations that have been incorporated into the project design relative to driveway throat depth and gate queuing and things like that. But again, I'll I'll reiterate the fact that neither of these projects take direct access off of Iron Point Road. Rather, there's private loop streets and the driveways are part of those private loop streets. The traffic volume and speeds on those streets are pretty low. And the impact of this project did not warrant some of the the types of improvements that you would typically see with a new apartment project on on a major roadway. The driveway entrances, the staff report details the fact that driveway entrances were modified to make sure that queuing was safe and circulation, you know, backup and circulation on on the roads and with any queuing to the gates would would provide the necessary safety.
Pam, both of these are going to be gated?
Yes, both of them are going to be gated. And I think one of the comments, I'll skip to this slide real quick. This Traffic Safety Committee did look at the project in January and made recommendations that the applicant look into whether there would be some kind of a traffic control solution around Lot One further, you're close to highway, you know, closer to Highway Fifty as it relates to coordination with driveways at Kaiser Site. And so again, a widening of that driveway was done. The the traffic consultant did not recommend any additional traffic control based on the volumes and speeds out there. And so those changes that were recommended have been incorporated. And then the Traffic Safety Committee asked us to evaluate the potential to improve. And then the Traffic Safety Committee asked us to evaluate the potential to improve pedestrian access along the westernmost side of Kaiser. That was looked at. There's substantial grade differences, and what you can see in this slide and as part of the report is that, you know, that property is not owned or controlled by this particular, it's privately owned and operated, and there's, given the grade difference and the trees on that site, this is not a recommendation that we had to add any sidewalk improvements in that location. But appreciated the comments that were made by the Traffic Safety Committee, and we did get contacted by one of the Traffic Safety Committee members, asking whether this was going to go back to them for, you know, consideration. And what we will do is provide information back to them, kind of a report out from the analysis and that standard with our process. We also, just a quick summary of parking noise and tree issues associated with the project site. They are exceeding the minimum parking requirements, and part of that is that there's a little extra area that's under the overhead utility lines that allows them to provide some additional parking. And so 491 are required through both sites, and, I'm sorry, 462 are required on both sites and 491 are provided. Bicycle parking also exceeds the requirement of 51. 55 spaces are provided, both interior and exterior, plus there's additional opportunity for bike parking in the garages. Noise impacts can be mitigated, and really, that's associated with the adjacency to Highway 50 and Iron Point Road and standard construction mitigation for meeting interior noise level standards will accommodate those, and the conditions have been added to the project. Finally, in terms of oak trees, there are 11 protected oak trees on the site. One's in poor condition. Three of them are being preserved, and seven are proposed for removal. We talked quite a bit about this with the Planning Commission and identified that, given grade differences and planned development on the site, it was anticipated that many of those trees would be impacted. They are planning to do most of the mitigation on-site with the planting of 35 oak trees combined on Lots One and Six, and then any additional mitigation would be done through in lieu fee payment. And this exhibit just shows where mitigation planting would be on both of those sites. Initial study and mitigated NIG deck were prepared, and the mitigation measures were included as project conditions. I listed out those areas. No surprises really there based on the proposed project and the area. The Staff and Planning Commission, by a vote of four to one, with two members absent, are recommending to City Council that you adopt Resolution 10849 for the general plan amendment, plan development permit, and corporate center, for the corporate center apartments with the mitigated NIG deck, and then introduce and conduct first reading of the ordinance for the zoning change. And then we would bring second reading back at your next meeting on consent. So with that, I would be happy to do my best, answer any questions, as well as Steve Banks would have if he was here. And then there's a great team of people behind me that can probably answer anything that I can't.
Right.
I have a question. So what, if any recreational facilities are being constructed as part of each of the two complexes?
Both of them have several amenities, and I'm going to ask the applicant to address that when they come up, if that's okay.
Yeah, because it didn't look like there was much shown on the site plan.
There are several things in both complexes, but I'll have them address that.
It's just that they're, you know, some distance away from existing park facilities.
Yep, good point.
So if the applicant would like to come up and answer that question, I would be grateful.
Rob Cole?
Thank you, Director Johns. I'm Rob Cole with Cole Partners Development Company. Here tonight, just so you're aware, with our co-development partner, the Ruby Company, and then our design team. So can I answer your question, Mayor Howell?
Please do.
Okay, sure. So we have two clubhouses on both sites, as Director Johns was saying. Both of them offer swimming pools, fitness centers, and there are dog parks as well on both of those sites.
Okay.
Good.
Great.
Thank you.
Mayor Howell, can you reiterate your question?
What recreational-type amenities are being provided at both locations?
Oh, okay. I thought there was something more to it that I wasn't quite understanding. Okay, thank you.
There's activities for the adults and for the puppies.
Yeah.
Good. I have one quick question, ma'am. I know you were sharing the traffic, and you're explaining quite a bit even on the Traffic Safety Committee. Could you please go back to that slide? I couldn't record the number. I know the merger is going to be to Iron Point, right? The houses at the end, they're going to come and merge into Iron Point.
You're talking about, yes, there's access here, and they would come out to Iron Point here, and then the driveway in this location would come out to Iron Point.
Iron Point here, right?
But those are all, those roadways already exist. Those roads that connect to Iron Point already exist.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. Since we are adding another 460 cars, based on the spots, right, approximately, Iron Point is a very busy, very high-speed kind of street, like 45 miles, but no one goes 45 miles, most of them 55. I want to make sure, I think we have taken that safety concerns into consideration. When the guy is coming into 55 miles per hour and this guy is merging, you know, how did we discuss that one? I'm not sure. Anyone can help, please?
I'd like our traffic consultant to come up and just explain that, but we did a traffic analysis. He did a traffic analysis at 17 intersections and did analyze what the additional traffic impacts would be on Iron Point Road, and there were discussions about queuing improvements that needed to be made, but those are city responsibilities, and this would, this project would pay into those fees, but I'll let.
I think the other thing that we need to, that needs to be made clear here, there are existing businesses out there. So all of that is currently happening, whether this happens or not. And initially, this wasn't going to be housing. It was going to be more workspaces, if you want to call it that. And so, in my estimation, this is actually going to generate far less traffic than it would if these had been employment centers.
Okay. That's okay. Thank you.
Traffic consultant may or may not agree with me, but that would be my guess.
No, I was going through this, reading and reading. Yeah, please, come, sir. I was going through, reading and reading. There is so much happened before I got onto the City Council, right? You know, I was trying to spin my head around. Thank you.
So I'm Dr. Kier. I'm the traffic consultant. I'm working on behalf of the city rather than behalf of the developers, and my fiduciary responsibility is to you guys. I, first off, agree with the mayor. By lieu, by the fact that this will be housing rather than additional employment, it will better balance the traffic flows in and out of the business park. Rather than having everybody come in in the morning and come out in the afternoon, this, just the flows from it balance. As part of the traffic study, we looked at... Is the center one the pointer on this?
Just the air, yes, the center right.
Oh, right there. Okay. So we looked at, I don't even see it up there, so I'm going to point.
Yeah, it's there. No, you're sorry.
We looked at all three access points that you see here to Iron Point Road. The one to the west near Kaiser is a right-in, right-out driveway. We've got the main one there with the signal, and then we've got on the east end next to Lot Six, oh, thank you, perfect. That's right-in, right-out from the eastbound traffic, and there's also a left turn-in from the westbound traffic. And all three of those were analyzed under existing conditions, conditions about five years into the future, representing growth from other approved and anticipated projects, and then at the horizon year, which is 2035. And we looked at that both with and without the project. There were no deficient level of service situations at either, any of those intersections, and there were no anticipated queuing issues at any of those intersections. We also look at crash history through the entire study area, and there was no crash history at these intersections that was above and beyond what you normally see at typical roadways indicating a dangerous situation. So there were no impacts from the project at these locations.
The center one has the traffic light, but not the remaining two entrances, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. I think I'm going to go through it, and its second reading is there. We can answer more questions. Thank you.
I have one question. I'm not sure if it's for Pam or for our traffic consultant or for Mark, but there's, I feel like it's probably a little west of here, but are there median projects that are incomplete? We have a couple of spots where there are wooden barriers where we go down from three lanes to two. Is that in this vicinity, and is this going to trigger any changes to the way the medians are configured?
The medians, excuse me, the medians in this area are largely complete, as I recall. Over by Intel, we have several sections of median that are unimproved. In fact, there's an item coming to you at the next council meeting. There's a median improvement project in that area.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Anybody like to make a motion?
Now, now, Mayor, this is a public hearing.
Yes, ma'am. So we will open the public hearing. We do not have any requests to speak. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this item?
Could we please double-check that there's no one on the phone?
I don't see any hands raised. If anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star three. I don't have any.
Okay, no one.
Can the motion include both, or do they need to be separate?
Separate, please.
Separate, okay.
Okay, so we will close the public hearing, and if...
I'll move Resolution 10849.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
I have a quick question, though. This is the first reading, right?
The second item is a first reading. The first one is resolution.
I'm good.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on Resolution 10849.
Councilmember Sakino is recused.
Recused.
Chalum Cherle.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes.
And I'll move the first reading of ordinance number 1327.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Chalum Cherle.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. Okay. Assuming that the microphone is on in the other room, we could bring Councilmember Sakino back in, and then we will move back to item 18. So, and as part of item 18, this is an appeal by Igor Semenjak, and I apologize if I mispronounced that, of a decision by the Historic District Commission denying a conditional use permit for the Lakeside Memorial Lawn Crematorium Project, PN 19-182, located at 1201 Forest Street, continued from April 26, 2022. So I am going to open the hearing on the appeal and request that staff make their presentation to the council. That will be followed by the appellant with 10 minutes to make his presentation. Then the members of the public may address the City Council. Each of you will be given no more than three minutes, and I'm just going to remind everybody that we did, council members all heard. We had to say at the last meeting, and because of our technical glitches, which is why we're basically having a somewhat of a redo of this. Then the appellant will have five minutes to make closing remarks. Staff will then answer any questions of the council, and then we will close the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Howell, members of the council. I am Josh Kincaid, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department, and tonight I will be presenting again the appeal by Igor Semenjak of the Historic District Commission's denial of the Lakeside Memorial Lawn Crematory Conditional Use Permit. So the project is located within the open space public area of the Historic District. It is adjacent to the Preserve subdivision, also known as Lake Natoma Shores to the north, the mining tailings, excuse me, and Folsom Boulevard to the east, the Jonghwa Cemetery to the south, and the Folsom Lake State Recreation Area, American River Bike Trail, and American River itself to the west. The applicant applied for a conditional use permit from the Historic District Commission to operate a crematory facility inside an existing metal structure within the fenced maintenance area of the cemetery, outside of a single exhaust stack located above the roofline of the structure. The only site modifications would consist of two 250-gallon propane tanks next to the structure. The applicant proposes to perform up to four cremations per day, which take around 90 minutes each, and a maximum of 500 cremations per year. Here in the site plan, we see that our two structures on, within the maintenance area, the rectangular structure that's been around since the 90s is where the crematorium is proposed. And here we have some manufacturer specifications of the cremator machine with the exhaust stack and rain cap, and staff notes that this is for schematic purposes only. In the staff report, staff looked at multiple areas of potential concern. For zoning, cemeteries are allowed in the open space public zone with the issuance of a conditional use permit, and staff considered the proposed crematory to be an accessory use to the cemetery, given the fact that it would be operated ancillary to the existing cemetery and ran by the same group that owns the cemetery. Staff also found that there were several crematories within Sacramento County operating ancillary to cemeteries and funeral homes. So it is common to have a crematorium operating ancillary to a main use in the area. Staff did have an initial study prepared that included a full project-specific air quality and greenhouse gas analysis done by technical professionals, and in consultation with the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District, that analysis found that the operational emissions and community incremental excess cancer, chronic, and acute health risks were shown to not exceed the air district's daily or annual thresholds as designed. Staff notes that the project would also be subject to future permitting, regular reporting, and annual inspections to the air districts. For fire and life safety, the initial study confirmed that impacts would be less than significant, and the fire chief verified that the current access is adequate and that the stack and propane tanks do not result in substantial elevated fire risks. Now, looking at visual impacts, here's a view of the tailings and the, and the project site in the distance on the right. This is about the only area outside of the project site itself that staff could find where the structure is clearly visible. Here we see a view of the metal structure where the crematory is proposed. You can see that there's a wooden fence surrounding the area where the propane tanks are proposed, so the tanks are not anticipated to be visible outside of the maintenance area. And here we have a view of the maintenance area from the edge of the cemetery closest to the Preserve subdivision. As shown here, the existing tree canopy mostly shields the maintenance area from the subdivision, and inclusion of the new stack on top of the building would not significantly alter this view. Staff originally concluded through consultation with the contracted archaeologist that the visibility of the proposed stack does not have a direct effect on the significance of the historic cemetery from a sequel perspective, especially as there's no ash that would spread to the grave sites on the historic cemeteries. And finally, looking at cultural resources, so the Lakeside Cemetery includes the, which includes the Oddfellows and Mason Cemeteries, the Dredge Mining Tailings, and the Jonghwa Cemetery all appear on the City of Folsom's Cultural Resources Inventory, and Jonghwa and Lakeside appear on the Historic County Cemetery inventories as well. Staff had a cultural resources report prepared by a registered archaeologist due to the cultural sensitivity of the area. The qualities that make the historic cemetery significant are the aspects of integrity of setting, feeling, and association, according to the National Registration Form for Jonghwa, and the consultants concluded that the project would not significantly impact... concluded that the project would not significantly impact these qualities from a sequo standpoint. As part of the original 2003 initial study for this project, the, the previous iteration of the project, the Sacramento County Cemetery Advisory Commission sent a letter expressing concern for a crematory to be located in the vicinity of the historic resources described here. Staff recommended approval in 2022, however, in part based on the additional cultural resources and air quality studies that were performed by experts as part of, as part of the new initial study. After publication of the staff report, the cemetery commission sent a new letter restating their concerns from 2003. Staff shared these letters, as well as a letter from the Chinese Historical Society of America, with the archaeologists and environmental consultants, and found that the conclusions of the initial study did not change based on these comments, and that impacts would remain less than significant from a sequo perspective. Looking at the public comments, so throughout the life of the project, staff has received several public comments expressing concerns about or opposition to the project and the environmental document. Several speakers also spoke at the Historic District Commission hearing. Major issues brought up in the, the letters and in the, the folks that spoke included air quality, traffic, parking, wildfire, cultural resources, land use, aesthetics, economic, and psychological concerns. So while the commission expressed confidence in the air quality analysis from a sequo perspective, they ultimately had cultural resources concerns that led their, to their decision to deny. During deliberation, they stated that they were not convinced that a crematory was a historically appropriate use, and that the cemetery advisory commission maintained that the crematorium would have a negative impact on the historical significance of the cemetery. Ultimately, the finding for denial of the use permit was made based on the use being detrimental to the general welfare of the, the neighborhood, and, and that it was detrimental to, to property in the city due to impacts on the historical character of the cemetery and historical use of the area. The commission denied the use permit six to one because it was a denial of the entitlement rather than the sequo document. A sequo finding was not made. After the denial, the applicant did submit a timely appeal of the decision, and later submitted supplemental information explaining additional reasons for the appeal. They claimed that the denial was based on the resident's concerns rather than the data in the staff report and initial study, and that the crematory would not impact the historical character of the cemetery due to it being placed in a modern maintenance area. Staff notes that the commission's denial finding did not cite the initial study specifically, but rather was based on the letters from the cemetery commission and Chinese Historical Society that expressed concern about the impacts to historical character of the area. So while these letters did not change staff's sequo conclusions, they were used as substantial evidence to deny the conditional use permit. The applicant states that there are other historic cemeteries in the region that have crematories. Staff's research indicated this was not the case, at least for the historic cemeteries within Sacramento County. The applicant brought up the issue of property values, which was the subject of, several members of the public had concerns about. However, the denial finding was not based on property values directly. And finally, the applicant states that there are not any industrially zoned areas in Folsom with a neighborhood more than 500 feet away that could accommodate his proposed crematory. Staff found four industrial properties with land that was over 500 feet from residential uses, but their availability and practicality for what the applicant is proposing is not known. So with all that in mind, I'll turn to the conditional use permit finding. The text here is taken directly from the municipal code section on use permits, describes what council would have to find to either approve or deny the conditional use permit. You'll note that it's a bit different than the finding that was made by the Historic District Commission, and that it includes some language about the use under the circumstances of the particular case, and whether the use would be detrimental to not only the health and safety and general welfare, but also the peace morals and comfort of those in the area as well. Staff believe that while the environmental documentation does not show a significant environmental impact from a sequo perspective, there are substantial, there, there is substantial evidence in the record from the Historic District Commission hearing to show that the, these findings can be met for denial. So based on the commission's decision and the analysis of the city council staff report, staff is recommending denial of the appeal, again, based on the, the impacts to cultural resources. We do have several folks here who could help answer a variety of questions. We have Robert Edgerton from Helix, who prepared the initial study.
The staff is recommending denial. That's huge. For the Historic Commission, they recommended approval. Yeah.
Whoever it is that's speaking online, could you please mute yourself?
Thank you. We do have Robert Edgerton here from Helix to field any environmental questions about the analysis and conclusions of the initial study. Victor Ortiz from Helix is on the line to answer any air quality questions about the, the study that was done. Lisa Westwood from Ecore is also on the line to further assist with questions about cultural resources and the report that, that she prepared. And then we, we do have Brian Krebs from the air district, who is also kind enough to join, who can answer any questions about their permitting and enforcement process. So with that, I can take any questions.
Just a point of clarification. So the initial staff recommendation when this went to the Historic District Commission was approval of the project, correct?
Correct.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that it would be a little bit more fair to say that the staff recommended approval and the Historic District Commission recommended denial.
Correct. Staff recommended approval to the Historic District Commission, and, and staff is forwarding the, the Historic Commission's...
So it's not necessarily a staff recommendation, it's the Historic District Commission's recommendation?
We're forwarding that recommendation to council.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any other questions before I have the applicant come up?
Yeah, just one thing.
Appellant, rather.
Appellant. Since February HDC meeting till, till last meeting, did we do as a city anything, and cities different? Is city has done any research or any additional work between February and April 23rd?
Additional, we, we have reached back out to the cemetery commission to see if they had additional information to provide, and if they were able to, to meet regarding the, the crematorium. We've, we've made contact with them a couple times. They didn't, they, they provided a, an additional comment letter that was provided within the, the, the new staff report.
Thank you.
I have one.
I'm sorry, one, one more point. The, the, the question in, in the, the appellant's, the, the research that we did regarding the points that were made in the appeal itself about, about industrial properties being 500 feet away from residences, that was new research from, after the Historic District Commission hearing, and the, whether or not there were any historic cemeteries in Sacramento County that had crematories inside of them as well, was, was additional research.
Got it. Thank you.
I'd like to renew my question from last time, which is, what zoning designations do we have in Folsom where this use would not require a conditional use permit?
The M1 and M2 zones are the ones that, that staff looked at for, looking at what the industrial properties were in Folsom that would be able to accommodate a, a use that, that has more intensive uses, I guess.
So, are those the only two?
Yes.
Okay, so commercial districts?
Well, commercial districts don't call out cemeteries specifically.
I guess I'm not, I'm, we're not discussing establishing a cemetery. We're talking about installing a crematoria.
Right.
So if that were the business in and of itself, what zoning designations could it be located in within the city of Folsom? And then I have a follow-up question, which is, what other regulations limit the locations where that could be, could be placed, perhaps from the air board or other regulatory bodies that we know of? Because we are effectively right now talking about, you know, a recommended denial of something that has a extremely narrow area that it can be located within, in spite of great demand for that service.
And, and just as a follow-on to that question, this, I presume, is something that is not specifically listed in the zoning code?
Correct.
So it's, they're just, they're kind of flying by the seat of their pants to determine where it could or could not go, because it's not currently restricted to any specific zoning.
Okay.
I know in, in the commercial land use table, I believe there's, or not the table, but the, the section surrounding the table, there, there is a section that talks about looking at similar uses and being able to determine similarity. I'm not sure of the actual language of it. I'd have to, I'd have to look at the municipal code itself to, to get the language on that specifically. In this case, we were looking at an ancillary use to a cemetery, which is why I brought up the cemetery itself, but the code also does not call out crematories.
Okay, so I guess then, if this were the primary use, could it go into one of our commercial zones?
Commercial zones, we would have to make a judgment call that it is similar enough to another use that's allowed in the commercial zone, which is why we looked at the M1 and M2 zones, because from a, a, you know, use perspective, or at least what the, the applicants had, had referenced in, in the, the appeal regarding industrial zones that could, that could handle this, those are, those are the ones we looked at.
Okay, all right. I'm, I'm gonna come back to this question later on. I don't want to waste the applicant's time talking about this initially, but I would like to understand the full limitations that there are on placing, placing a crematoria in the city.
And we can look at the code to see whether or not a, a use similar to this would require a use permit in the, the M1 and M2 zones, or whether it would be allowed by right based on the similarities to other uses allowed by right in M1 and M2.
Any other questions of staff before I have the appellant come up?
Maybe I'll just clarify on that a little bit, or help.
I understand the M1, M2 thing. I'm talking about the totality of our commercial zoning designations.
Right, so because there are, in some cases, very specific uses and others very general uses, we have a catch-all description in almost every zone that allows for director discretion for similar uses. And so that's an analysis that we go through when we get a request for something that isn't specifically or clearly listed. So where a cemetery would be listed, or could be allowed based on the impacts, we would identify that as something that could potentially accommodate a crematorium. But where it's not listed specifically in the commercial districts, but the districts describe their purpose and have other similar uses, we would go through and evaluate whether they could be allowed. So it is not, in our current code, a very straightforward use analysis, because it isn't a very common use. And that's not dissimilar to how a lot of other jurisdictions address their allowed use tables. In our zoning code update that we're working on, we intend to get more clear, so that there's criteria for, you know, evaluating that, and you're describing uses generally in a way that help all interpreters, users of the code to understand, you know, generally what could or could not go within any zoning district within the city.
Okay, I, I'm perfectly happy with there being some discretion in recognizing that things may be one-offs. I just thought that, having asked this question before, we might have analyzed it a little bit further. That's all. So anyway, so that we can move on. We're not deciding what the zoning ordinance should or shouldn't allow tonight. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, is that a question? Okay, then I will invite the appellant to come on up.
Madam clerk, will you set a clock, please?
Yes.
I'm sorry, 10 minutes.
I don't think I'll be 10 minutes. Hello, everyone. Good evening. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and city council members, and Elaine, and Lydia, and everyone else. I'm Igor Semenjak. And again, we're asking for an appeal on the decision made. It's been a road, so I'm not going to get into more data and things like that. Like last time, I just wanted to, I guess maybe answer some questions, but before I did, I wanted to just clarify some things about the, the commission, the, the cemetery commission that keeps being brought up. So I just wanted to, I, I did some bullet points as far as, there's no confusion on the fact that, you know, Lakeside Memorial Lawn is in the historic district of Folsom. We are very well aware of that. There's no confusion that in proximity is a historical landmark cemetery. We are very well of that. And we are very well that Lakeside Memorial Lawn is a very, very old cemetery. It has very old sections within the cemetery. But it's also a modern and existing cemetery, which is fully operational to this day. It's privately owned and held, and we are overseen by the California Funeral Bureau only. So as far as like even the Sacramento County Advisory Commission placing us on a list to become a possible landmark and things like that, it's, we're not in denial about that. I'm sure it's on a list somewhere. It was news to us, and only because we are not a, they're not an agency that governs us, or oversees us, or that we report to, or anything like that. I just wanted to make a, a note that on that list of cemeteries, a majority of them are rundown and owned by the government, and I believe only two are owned by a nonprofit organization. So that's why we were confused on why we made the list. We understand why we made the list, as far as the historical sections within the cemetery. And I just wanted to say that, again, like, we continue to ask the question of how is a crematory being placed in a modern area of the cemetery going to negatively impact the historicity of the cemetery? Like, our question still remains, where is the data for that? Like, where's there a code or regulation that we can point to that says you can't have a crematory because it's based on this kind of code? And we've asked that from the commission, and like Josh said, we have not heard any updated response from that. In their responses, again, it was just based on feelings. Like, we feel it's not appropriate and things like that. And that's understandable as well. But I just wanted to point that out, that that's kind of what, where we're at. I also wanted to state that not everyone in the Preserve and in the historic district feels that way. We have received many phone calls, emails. The issue is, is people have asked us to keep them anonymous because of the kind of hostile nature this has turned and emotional attachment that this is. We understand the ick factor is huge. I've seen all the media coverage. I've personally looked at all the websites that personally list my name as a person responsible for something that is needed within our city. And I just wanted to finish, I don't want to take up too much time, is just saying that what we're doing is not outside the norm of what we have done with our other crematories, and what other funeral or cremation operators do. Our crematories primarily are all in funeral homes or in cemeteries. There's, a few of them are only in actual, like warehouses. So I just wanted to make that, as far as where our thought process was, was that we were not doing something that's outside the norm of our kind of funeral industry. So, again, thank you for your time. Any questions?
Any questions?
No questions.
I have. Mike, please go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, what, to your understanding, what are the limitations on locations where crematories can be placed?
Yeah, great, great question, because I was gonna...
Or even where they have, or even where they have been placed.
Yeah, so, again, especially in cities that I would say crematories are new, like Folsom. Like, we walked through this with other cities, like Yuba City and Marysville and things like that. It's basically, you're writing the code as you come in, but the one thing that we also have to remember is, like, even if you vote yes, and it was approved, we still have to go through other procedures, like the air quality board still has to do their evaluation and things like that. And if they find some discrepancies, you know, it, it could become an issue on actual placement. The one thing is that we are in California, which is the second highest... which is the second highest environmentally regulated state in the United States, Hawaii being the only one that beats us. And I was just there, and I visited a crematory in Maui. But, so, before anything begins, there's a CEQA compliance. And from my understanding, even if we were in a zone, like industrial, or M1 or M2, we'd still have to probably go through, so instead of the city being lead agency, it's the air quality that becomes the lead agency, and there still has to be a CEQA report done to mitigate the California law as a state law. So we can see from the data that that kind of, so in the CEQA report, they look at location as well. So it's not just like, oh, we can just put this in an office or commercial zoned. If there are, you know, if it's a 20-story foot building or things like that, it's, there's a lot of different things that are also looked at, not just what is the environmental impact. So.
Okay, let me turn my attention to our community development director, then. Is the Air Board the lead agency for a CEQA review of this project ultimately, or are we the city of Folsom?
We are the lead agency. They are the permitting agency and the enforcement authority.
Do we have to be the lead agency, or was that just a choice that was made along the way?
I believe we are, by default, the lead agency.
If I may, Councilmember Kozlowski, that's a really good question.
CEQA is insanely complicated. That's why I'm asking these questions.
And I'll try to, try to make it easy for everybody. So it depends on who is the first stop to process the application. And right here, this is the first stop, and therefore we have to do CEQA. If there's no use permit required, it's, you know, if a zone is such that allows the crematorium by right, then the permitting agency, the Air Board, in this case, would then have to do CEQA. So it depends on who is the first stop for the project.
But do, in this, do we actually have a situation where the crematorium is allowed by right?
I don't believe we do here. There, as you heard from Director Johns, there are situations where we can make a judgment call to see if there's a comparable use. From my read of the code, it appears that it actually would require a council action to amend the code to specifically specify if this is allowed use, or it requires a use permit.
Okay, so let me just back up and make sure I heard you correctly. If, if it's allowed by right, then we wouldn't be the lead agency?
Yes, you are correct. But whoever is issued a permit.
If it's not allowed by right, then we have to be the lead agency.
Because that would require that you, the council, would have commissioned, right.
All right, very good.
So, and, so just again, to follow along that question, what has AQMD said on this issue? Has AQMD weighed in on this yet?
AQMD has reviewed the.
Sorry, AQMD, for those that don't know, is Air Quality Management District for the county.
They've reviewed the initial study. They've been in contact with the city regarding this project. They're on the phone tonight to answer any questions about their permitting process, but they're awaiting the, or the applicant is awaiting the decision of council before submitting officially to AQMD for their permit.
Okay.
Ultimately, though, they would be reviewing a permit, and then they would also be a interested party for the CEQA action, or CEQA documentation.
If I may, Councilmember Kozlowski and Madam Mayor, in that case, if a CEQA document has already been prepared, then they would use and leverage the existing CEQA document to do their subsequent follow-on review. They don't have to recreate a new document, but they can use the existing document and go from there.
Okay, as the lead agency were preparing, in theory, a CEQA document that they would then review?
In this case, yes, sir.
Okay.
And in the event that AQMD, who apparently is on the phone tonight, were to find that there would be some violation of air quality requirements within the county, then they simply would not grant the permit, correct? Okay.
Okay, and then last thing, I promise, on this line of questions. The, does AQMD have a, an opinion at all about the underlying zoning of a parcel that some use like this might end up on?
I do not believe they do, but they're on the line.
But if they're on the line, that would be great if somebody from AQMD could answer that question.
Right.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Brian Krebs. I'm a permit manager here at the Air District. I'll be quite honest, I, you know, I'm not really our CEQA division or division that deals with it. But in general, you know, we, from a permitting perspective, it's generally after CEQA has been done, then we're, we have the green light to go ahead with the permit review. And as far as whether we make an analysis as to the, I guess, whether or not it's appropriate land use, you know, zoning decision, that is the requirement of the local jurisdictions, typically not something that the Air District raises in.
Okay, all right. Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate that. And thank you all for helping me understand that bit of things. I just, I really, I am concerned that if this, this project is, if the denial from the historic district commission stands, that we will effectively make it impossible to do this service in Folsom in perpetuity. So that's why I'm asking these things. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a quick question. Mr. Igor, thank you for acknowledging that the Lakeside Memorial is on the historic roster. And, you know, it was a, you know, back and forth the last time. Thank you. But you made some comments. Sacramento County has identified about 21 historic crematoriums. And you are quickly making some comment, which I didn't know, and I'm putting my quasi-judiciary hat today, right, besides council member? Most of them are government-owned, and some of them are nonprofit, or any of them are profit-owned?
As far as the list I looked at, and from what I can find, I did not find any that are privately owned. The ones on the list are incredibly rundown, apart from, like, Sylvan District Cemetery, which is city-owned, to my knowledge, and Fair Oaks District Cemetery. And then there are sections that are within the cemetery that is called Quiet Haven now, which is off of, and that's owned by, like, Bethany Church, out on Elder Creek Road in Sacramento. That was the only kind of two sections that are within that current cemetery, but they are, they're nonprofit-owned there. They don't report to the California Funeral Bureau like we do. So the whole concept of the, this advisory commission is that they report to Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. So, you know, that was, just to clarify that it's not an agency that we report to.
Yeah, I'm good on that. I think I know about that as well, because I was one of the advisory committee for, you know, American River Parkway. But I just want that clarity. So most of them are government-owned. Usually, they may not have that push to add a crematorium for the cemetery. I'm trying to gather the facts here, that way when I come to my deliberation, I have all facts around.
Yeah, I understand that the significance of the commission was derived because, like many cemeteries, like we have the old St. John's Cemetery, that we facilitate the burials for that. It's not, I believe it's still under the church's jurisdiction, but we contract out to do, like, existing burials of urns or caskets, once family approves that they have a deed to the land. But just like that cemetery, you can tell it's in disarray. It's concrete. There isn't any fund, funding that's going to maintenance there. The majority of these cemeteries are the same. And so this commission was derived to kind of look for funding and things like that, so to upkeep these cemeteries, so they're not detrimental, you know, to the public, and as well as preserve its historicity.
Thank you. Ma'am, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we will now allow the public to address the council, and we will strictly enforce the three-minute, the three-minute time. So as we did at the last meeting, the clerk will call a few names in advance. If you could move toward the aisle so that we can move this along a little bit more quickly, I would greatly appreciate it.
First speaker will be Janice Briale, then Dean Dodson, and after that, Dan, Dan Charlebois.
Charlebois? Okay, sorry. You knew who we were saying.
Janice Briale's first.
Mayor Howell and other members of the city council. My name is.
Could you pull that microphone down just a little tiny bit to make it easier? No, the other one, that one, yeah. Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Mayor Howell and other members of the city council. My name is Janice Briale, and I am a 26-year resident of the historic district. I am appearing before you to voice my opposition to the crematorium project. I am not an expert on land use law, but I am informed that Bob Delp, a resident of the historic district, is. I have read his February 16, 2022, letter to the historic district commission on the proposed project. I was impressed by the analysis he provided on page four of his letter titled, "The General Plan Has No Land Use Designation For Either A Cemetery Or A Crematorium." Mr. Delp's comments on the subject can be summarized as follows. The initial study's incorrect interpretation and analysis, which tear from the general plan's EIR, are fundamentally flawed and must be revised. The initial study incorrectly states that the project would be consistent with the general plan land use designation of open space. The general plan mentions cemeteries just once and crematoriums not at all. It is unreasonable to suggest that the intent of those policies is that such open space areas could or might be used for a crematorium. Further, while Folsom Municipal Code Section 17.52.550 identifies cemeteries as a permitted use in the open space area of the historic district, subject to a conditional use permit, the code does not extend the definition of a cemetery to a crematorium. The code is subordinate to and may not conflict with the general plan. Therefore, attempting to expand the unspecified code definition of a cemetery to include a crematorium even further strays from the general plan's open space land use designation and is not permissible. I agree with Mr. Delp's analysis. The crematorium project is not in compliance with the general plan and the Folsom Municipal Code and should not be allowed to proceed. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Dean Dodson, then Dan Charlebois.
Hi, councilmembers. Thanks for hearing me out. I'm a, I'm Dean Dodson. I'm a 25-year resident of the city of Folsom. And I've raised my family here. And, and really, I think my thoughts on this are pretty much more practical. I've been here for the 25 years. We found Folsom as a great little community. And in the 25 years, we've seen the population change. Our city has changed. It's grown, and what I believe for the better. We offer so many more services within our city limits than, than what we did 25 years ago. And, and what I've enjoyed within the city is that I don't have to go to other communities to, to experience, you know, other needs that I might have. And, and as I've raised my, my family, and they're, my daughters are grown, one is married, they're, they actually live outside the city limits and would love to move back. They can, they can't afford to do that at this point. They're outside in, like, Fair Oaks and Orange Vale, trying to save so that they can move back, because they, this is where they want to raise their families. But the dilemma that I, that I see is, also, as I get older, the cost of living is, is rising. I think we talked a little bit about the property taxes still continuing to go up. And, and I think the service that Lakeside provides, they provide not only this beautiful setting, but a place that I've attended countless funerals at. I see older people, you know, ending, you know, finding a place to, to remain here in Folsom long after they're gone, something I hope to do. But the costs involved, and their industry is probably no different than the gas prices. You know, things go up, and, and the cost of, of death, you know, probably rises. And I would assume that the cost for cremation services is a more economical matter for many, many people. And so as I see myself get older, and certain needs arise, I think it's very important for the city to provide something within its city limits that is going to meet so many needs. So I just, I think it would be a travesty to, to, to just end this and sweep it away to sending the services outside the city limits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Dan Charlebois, followed by Dan Winkelman, and then Steve Walsh.
Mayor Howell, councilmembers. My name, well, we already know my name, don't we? It's Dan Charlebois. I live at 9551 Golden Drive. I'm one of those houses that sits over the bluff, just yonder, and overlook Lake Natoma. And my backyard view most months, when the foliage allows, is the cemetery. And as a citizen of a neighboring community with a view, and a rich love for antiquity that our area is blessed with, you know, I want to thank you for, for listening to me as well. And as a neighbor, I have a number of friends who are in, are in tured at the cemetery, and I've always felt, or found it very well-kept. As a neighbor, also, I take advantage of the many opportunities that the historical district offers in Old Town. In fact, if we can wrap this up, I'd like to get to Sam Horns, if it's not too late. Over the years, I have admired the tenacity in which the community, as well as the vendors, have gone to, as much as possible, to retain a semblance of historicity in the Old Town District. And of course, it would include not just the cemetery, but Miller Funeral Home, that is located just down the street in the historic district. When I visit the Old Town, I notice, you know, on Saturdays, when I get my vegetables, you can't help but notice the 21st century. All the entryways, the, to the doors, or to the businesses, you know, they weren't there 20 years ago, let alone 150 years. They've changed. We have handicap access. We have sprinklers inside. And we have those dratted little yellow mats that rearrange your groceries. They're there, too. And I'm not, I'm not in the funeral business, but I know that it's changed. Here's what I know. It used to be, 150 years ago, when we buried people, we would wrap them in a blanket or burlap, and if we could afford it, a pine box. We still use pine box, but that's all given away to, to metal and other composites. In fact, we used to just lower them into the ground, and now we use what is called a vault. So things have changed. That historic district is doing things differently, and yet, if you walk around there, you see many headstones that will take you back in time. So, you know, there is change, and, you know, I hope that nobody here would suggest that we abandon progress for the sake of antiquity. And I don't suggest that we, you know, just do it, so many people have done, and just, you know, abandon our past. But these buildings are just, they're, they're historical buildings and sites.
I'm going to need you to make your last point.
Okay. Miller Funeral Home's the only building down there, or the only place that's been here for 150 years, doing the same thing. for 150 years, doing the same thing. And they've been, the rest of them haven't. So I would just ask that you allow them to do what they've been doing for 150 years, same business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Dan Winkelman, then Steve Walsh.
Good evening. I'm Dan Winkelman. I live on Young Ho Circle. I am a retired State Park Ranger with experience in resource management as it applies to wildfires. On a morning in 1991, I walked out onto my front porch on Angel Island and looked out at a firestorm in the Oakland Hills. At that distance, the flames were about an inch high. That equates to 100 feet in the city. The tragic loss was fueled by groves of eucalyptus trees. A eucalyptus trunk has a vast quantity of oil, and the trunks hold layer upon layer of oil-laden bark. During the fire, this massive collection of burning bark flies through the air and drops on forests, starting fires similar to the Oakland Hills firestorm. A yard-large eucalyptus grove is on the corner of Park Shore Road and Folsom Boulevard. A fire in that grove and a south wind would set fire to the downwind forest towards the proposed Lakeside Crematorium and propane tanks. No defensible space would stop the indescribable heat that would ignite a blevy fire in the tanks. In a moment, you will see a video of a propane tank blevy fire. Blevy stands for boiling liquid, expanding vapor, explosion. Another training video that you will not see shows two fire trucks sending water onto a burning propane tank. Suddenly, the camera view went in every direction. The camera was retrieved and pointed back at the propane tank fire. Both fire trucks were gone, thrown through the air after the blevy explosion. A blevy fire occurring in our neighborhood forces the fire department to cease fire control and begin evacuation of citizens. We have only one exit road, and it is adjacent to the cemetery. A blevy explosion is capable of hurling trees and vehicles into our neighborhood and onto the escape road with catastrophic consequences. I ask the council to deny the crematorium permit. Thank you.
Next speaker is Steve Walsh. And Jennifer is just going to help set up a video for him to show, then Judy Alexander, then Matt Almas.
When a tank is exposed to sustained heat, such as from a fire, the liquid within the tank is forced to boil or vaporize, resulting in increased pressure in the tank. To prevent overstressing the tank, the relief device activates, venting the excess pressure. As pressure decreases in the tank, the valve begins to close. With continued heating, pressure again builds, causing the relief valve to reopen. Where flames impinge on the tank below the liquid level, the liquid absorbs the heat, allowing the tank metal to remain at a safe temperature. With continued relief valve operation, the liquid level drops, exposing a greater area of the tank to the effects of heating. With the flames impinging on the vapor space of the tank, the temperature of the tank metal, uncooled by liquid, rises. At some point, due to the vapor pressure from within, the tank metal begins to weaken, stretch, and eventually tear. As the tank comes apart, large quantities of both liquid and vapor are released in a powerful explosion. The heat radiated is sufficient to ignite combustibles and cause burns great distances from the explosion. Tank sections containing rapidly igniting fuel can become flying missiles, traveling great distances, causing secondary fires and other damage. It all happens quickly, with little warning.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Judy Alexander, then Matt Almas, then Larry Albach. I don't see Judy Alexander, so how about Matt Almas?
Hi, everyone. Appreciate you guys giving us this time just to kind of share. So my name's Matt Almas. I've been with Miller Funeral Home Carrying Service Group for about three years now. I actually am a funeral director, a crematory operator at our Yuba City location. I had the privilege of having YK come up, you were able to see Yuba City there, see how close we were to the neighborhoods and whatnot. So I just wanted to come down and share a little bit. So as far as stats and everything, you guys have heard all that. I don't want to go into any of that. So my biggest thing is why we do what we do, and that's to serve families. I never thought I would do this job. I married into it. I wanted to do something that I felt like had made a difference. And my father-in-law started Lauren Clayney, got me into this, and I love what I do. Part of what I do is being able to make a difference in grieving families' lives. And through that process, grieving is going to last for years. It's not just like once the service is completed. But the length of time that a service takes to get completed is so important. I've had services of my own close level ones that have passed that took upwards of three weeks due to other circumstances, and I've had services take place so that finished within a week's time. And the time that it takes is so crucial in to help through that grieving process, to have the closure of your loved one, to know that their body's been laid to rest. And so partly with Miller Funeral Home, we're having to tell families it's going to be a two-week turnaround from the time their loved one passes until the loved one's back in their care, partly because of permitting process that can take anywhere from, you know, three days, five days, up to a week. And then from there, transport all the way up to Yuba City, an hour away, to then be in the queue for a crematory, to then process cremated remains, do the cremation, and then take their end back down. Another thing with different cultures and religions, Sikh, Hindus, Buddhists, they use a crematory, and I do those services in Yuba City. We help facilitate a prayer service. Everyone comes up, pays their final respects, and then at that point, our crematory doors are right behind our chapel, and we then help assist put that crematory into the, sorry, the casket into the crematory. And those families down here we're not able to provide service to. And then I would say lastly, up in Yuba City, and YK, you did see this, our neighbors are, I would say about 100 feet from our crematory. They have my cell phone number. They know my name. I've helped them unload groceries when, you know, they're a little bit older. They have gentlemen's in a wheelchair. They call me when they need help, and never once have they ever complained about any smell, any smoke, or anything like that. So I understand the ick factor for people who are going to be close to this. I understand that. But I'm telling you that it's not the case. I've got neighbors close by and have had no problems. So appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Larry Albach.
Thank you, council members, for considering this proposal. Thank you, especially the last meeting. Two of you, actually, I was impressed that you took your time out of your personal schedules to go up to Green Valley and understand this more clearly. I stand here as a 30-year citizen of the city of Folsom and a business representative. I'm the CEO of a company called Buzz Oats. We've been in Sacramento County for 75 years. We've developed over 100 million square feet of industrial properties over the years. I'm well familiar with industrial uses and real estate values. And I'm also the incoming chair for the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, of which the city of Folsom is a member. I think most of us here would agree that thriving businesses are an integral part of a healthy community. Miller Funeral Home is an example, a model business in our community, literally. They've served over 150 years thousands of people in Folsom, and they've come requesting this service to add to their ability to serve our community in the future. They've done that reasonably, respectfully, non-confrontationally, and in turn addressed all of your staff's specific concerns that have been identified factually. And as you saw through the CEQA recommendation that they agreed to, the one remaining issue is really, that came out through the Historical Society, that basically is a subjective call. It's about the impact of cremation on the historical environment of our community. And I've heard it considered an ick factor of cremation. It's difficult to talk about, but I think that's disrespectful. Death is difficult, death is tough to talk about. Cremation is a choice of many families now and many more in the future. And I think that to be able to serve those families, that's what this group is asking us to consider and asking you to support. And I can just tell you, they've served my family. You heard from my wife last time. And I hesitate to do this, but I think it's important. They've served my family. My son was born in Mercy Folsom Hospital. My son spent his summers, and high school summers, clearing the ravine between the cemetery and this residential subdivision of poison ivy and brush and all those things, and came home. My son went on to serve in the United States Army. He died in Afghanistan a year and a half ago. My son is buried 30 yards from where this is being proposed. I would never stand and advocate for something to be anything disrespectful. I think you would understand it, and it's not just about my emotion, and I'll wrap this up, Mayor. It's about my family, of course, but it's about families in the future for this community, and I encourage you to support it. So thank you.
Next speaker is Isaac Monicle, then Dwight B., and Judy Alexander, if she's here and wants to speak.
Good evening, council members. My name is Isaac Monicle, and I live in the Preserve with my two and four-year-old sensitive receptors, and I'm a short walk from the proposed crematorium site. I'd like to focus on the data at hand, which clearly communicates that a crematorium at the Lakeside Cemetery is inappropriate and the application should be denied. After such a protracted process, it may be helpful for all parties to review the pertinent information, so I apologize for being repetitive. First, there's precedence of two historic commissions that have identified the project as inappropriate on two different occasions. The appropriateness has not and will not change. The only thing that changes is the aggressiveness of the applicant. This is not only a question of project appropriateness, but of ethics. The most impacted community does not want the project for valid use, safety, environmental, comfort, and moral reasons. The local community has been crystal clear with its sentiment. Let's recognize that a clear majority of individuals that have expressed support for the project have a financial incentive, and if the project were to go forward, will not have a home next to the incinerator. This is not about protecting a mom-and-pop shop. Legitimate reasons for denial of application are many. Here are six examples. Our own experienced city planners have discussed the project's inappropriate fit with the use of the area, where open space is defined as generally non-urban in character and may have utility for park and recreational purposes, conservation of land, water, or other natural resources, and for historic or scenic purposes. An industrial incinerator clearly does not fit that definition. People with Chinese heritage have clearly expressed that the proximity of the operation of a crematorium to their routinely desecrated sacred burial sites is troubling. We now have the power and hopefully the will to end the history of disrespect of Folsom's Chinese heritage. Real estate data has been presented to demonstrate the immediate effect on local home value, thus direct financial harm to the local community. Most of our biggest investments in our lifetimes are our homes. The Historic Commission outlined its own findings of complaints of nuisance emissions from residents in close proximity to local crematoriums. It's not if there will be an air quality problem, it is when. This was discussed at the Historic District meeting to the extent where the installation of high-quality wind direction sensors were a required condition to be able to correlate inevitable future complaints with atmospheric data. The application also claims that the crematorium would be an accessory use, which would be a use that is secondary and cannot exist on its own, which is false. And concerns about the state of research of emissions of crematoriums with modern medical advances, including radioactive medication, heavy metals, does not appear to be well captured in the current air quality report. We now have the opportunity to show our next generation what ethically good decisions look like by rejecting the appeal, and it's time to show the community the city's strong commitment to heritage, top-notch city planning, and respect for our neighbors. So thanks for hearing me out.
Next speaker is Dwight B., then Judy Alexander, then Catherine Corbett is the last speaker.
Hello. I kind of just have a question, and Igor can answer it because it's in his industry. But I swear to God, when my wife and I were like five, six years ago, there's a crematorium next to an ice cream place at the movie theater on Iron Point Road. I'm just wondering what happened to it. So I'm slightly against the motion, I guess, because I feel anecdotally that he could place his business somewhere else, and I'm just wondering if that's wrong or not. Because I swear to God, there was a crematorium there next to, there was an insurance place and then a ice cream store, right next to that movie theater on Iron Point Road. Do you guys know where that one is, on Folsom and Iron Point Road?
There is no crematorium in Folsom.
Okay.
And there hasn't ever been one.
Okay, well, that's just, I thought there was, so, thank you.
Last call for Judy Alexander, then Catherine Corbett.
Okay, now.
Catherine, can you move over closer to that microphone for me, honey?
I will. I hope I have all my notes, hopefully.
There you go.
First of all, Catherine Corbett, and I live in the Historic District. Now the outskirts, I've moved a little further out, but apparently by the map, I'm still officially in the Historic District. I want to say how much I appreciate our city council and all of our city government, and I've been so happy to live here over 20 years now. And I want to say, while I'm opposed to this location for the crematorium, I really wanted to say about the Miller Funeral Home that they really are the top professionals, both my, it's going to make me cry, my brother and my dad. They did a beautiful job and made, I recommend anybody to go to them, anybody. Top professionals when you really need it. My mother passed away, and because the warehouse industrial area was mentioned, my mother passed away in 1988, and I never would have imagined that I would go to her cremation. But because my father was concerned about it being her body, he put a friend in there, it was in Emeryville, to make sure that it was her ashes. And it actually was, I wouldn't have expected, but a good experience. We were all standing outside, and I'll never forget. We were all standing outside and I'll never forget that. And it, it was a good experience. Now, with so many major concerns, I mean, I could say them all, but no need to repeat. But with so many major objections to this site for cremation, uh, I hope you will consider assessing the four other potential sites, given how strongly a lot of people are opposed to this. This may be more suitable, one of them may be more suitable. I hope too, you will review Pete Asiga's win-win suggestion. I thought that was excellent. I thought it was one of my favorites, his speaking to that. And then I want to, to say that a lot of people don't participate, so many voices are missing of people that, that care about this. Over the years, I've been to many meetings down there, Vets Hall, Historical Society, HPL, where the heritage and the parking situation down there was discussed. So, there's a whole slew of people that don't watch or engage in this. I, I know of a lot of those people, so I was inclined to go get a lot of them, but my daughter said, "No, Mom, don't go get involved in that," but, um...
Catherine, I need you to wrap up.
Oh, good, okay. That's all I have to say, mainly that I hope you look at those other four prospects before making the decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And do we have anybody that is on the phone or on the...
We do.
Webex that would like to speak?
First speaker, phone-in, is M. McGary. You can press star six to unmute. All right. M. McGary, are you there?
I am, can you hear me?
Can you speak louder?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I am Dr. McGary. Our family with the Higgins, Gates, and Von Guten have retained the environmental law firm of La Zoue Drury to review the Historic District's decision and the accompanying mitigated negative declaration. As noted in our council's letter provided to you, they recommend that this body uphold the decision denying the requested conditional use permit. The inadequacies of the mitigated negative declaration have been addressed ad nauseam, as has the substantial evidence on the negative impact the appeal has on the historical significance of this community. Tonight, with over thousands of signatures on letters, petitions, emails, from voters in all of your districts before you, I am here up far past our child's bedtime to ensure that the decision my child wakes up to tomorrow is one that supports their racial and cultural identity in this community. As a woman of Asian descent, I have shared my concerns with you about the way in which the Lakeside application and subsequent appeal holds the potential to send a message of marginalization and historical insignificance to many members of the Asian-American community. Renowned historian Dr. John Henrik Clark described history as a clock that people use to tell their political and cultural time of day. He emphasized that it is also a compass that people use to find themselves on a map of human geography. History tells the people where they have been, what they have been, where they are and what they are. Standing with the Historic District's Commission to deny the conditional use permit and protect history protects the people. It protects their sense of belonging and identity. It protects the voter's personal and collective historical record in this city. It publicly recognizes that a community's well-being is more imperative than a financial quarterly report. Protecting history plays a vital role in ensuring that our community's quality of life is represented in the decisions that will enhance our opportunity to move forward in the spirit of diversity and equity. Undermining the value of history for profit's sake puts us at risk of disregarding our diverse human geography. An industrial crematorium on a historical site, in a zoned open space, will permanently harm the importance of the documented Chinese sacrifices, practices, and burial rituals that brought us to the present day. Cemeteries may be what has been previously identified as a dying industry, but the historical significance of this community deserves a chance to live on and thrive with honor and deep respect. As a taxpayer and voter, I ask you uphold the Historic District Commission's decision to deny the conditional use permit and support the larger cultural values and diverse members of your constituencies. Thank you.
If you could move to the next, next caller?
The next caller I have with the hand raised is Owen Thomas.
I can hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Owen Thomas and I live in the Preserve, two blocks from the Miller Funeral Home, with my fiance and my one-year and 13-year-old sensitive receptors. In the last meeting, it was mentioned that it would increase the health risk from a measure of 830 to 831 units. And how is any amount of increasing the health of risk to my children and family acceptable? Folsom already has some of the worst air quality index in the country during the summer and now with wildfires making it far more dangerous for our one-year and 13-year-old son, how is it acceptable to add a crematorium to the problem? What about property values? It will certainly lower our property values. I've talked to over 30 people about this issue and not one of them wants to live near a crematorium. No one wants to live near a crematorium. Just drive through my neighborhood and see all the signs opposing it. The psychological impact will be irreparable. Can you imagine trying to enjoy this beautiful setting, barbecue with friends, eating pork ribs and relaxing to the smell, to smell something amiss? I will never be able to help but wonder what that smell is. Please put this crematorium in a remote location away from my one-year and 13-year-old sons. Please protect the health of my children, our property values, and the psychological effect of burning six bodies a day in our backyard. Please deny this provisional use permit and protect the health of my children, the psychological impact of my family and friends, and our property values. Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker online, Mike Reynolds. To unmute, press star six. Go ahead.
Yeah, hopefully you can hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Okay, yeah. The, uh, the Residents Association submitted their comments in writing and so I won't revisit those. And I'll just be brief in my comment, but you know, listening to the points that come up, uh, what, what seems to be dawning on me is that, you know, the HTC was created and staffed to, because of the unique nature of the Historic District, and that there needed to be voices that were more focused on that area versus just generic planning. And so that we have our second appeal in the last, I would say, what, five months that is, that has come up here. Um, you know, it just feels like something's getting lost in that, where the voices are getting missed and the process that runs through that commission is somehow not working. And so that's my only point. I don't know what direction the votes are going to go tonight, um, but that if we start overturning those decisions or losing the voice of the residents, you know, I feel like we're going to sort of put that HTC off in a corner and I don't think that's the purpose. And so at least something in this needs to be, we need to be conscious of, what do we do better so we take these sort of out of the appeal queue? And that's all I'll add to the comments already submitted.
Okay, the next speaker will be Kyle Von Guten. Go ahead and unmute by pressing star six. All right, I'll, while you figure that out, I'll go on to another speaker. Tim McGary, your hand is raised. Are you there?
Can you, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I don't have very much more to add than what we also said tonight. Um, I believe it's very important to uphold the Historic District Commission's already vote on this, uh, six to one is very important and it's very important for this not to be in our neighborhood and it's not just in our neighborhood, but it's in any neighborhood in the city of Folsom, because this isn't everywhere else that everyone keeps on bringing up about, it's 100 feet from this neighborhood, 100 feet from that neighborhood. Those neighborhoods aren't the city of Folsom. The city, city of Folsom is distinctive by nature. Uh, you walk out my front door, you look across at the cemetery, you see deer running, you see turkeys, you see geese. That is the distinctive by nature that we have in our neighborhood. Uh, I don't want anything else there disturbing that. I believe as Lauren Planey said in the last meeting, that it's going to be in the mental shed and it might be a mental understanding that it's there, but we're not going to experience that. Um, walking out my front door, looking over, seeing a smokestack, seeing white puffs of smoke or heat waves coming from a crematorium, I'm going to know that there's a body burning there. And there's no one that's going to sit there and tell me that that's not going to affect my mental health or my mental stability in this neighborhood. Um, we already discussed moving out of this neighborhood based on that. So, I hope you uphold their decision this evening. Um, and that's all I have to say. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. Try Kyle Von Guten again. Did you figure that out? Go ahead. We can't hear you. Can't hear you, it sounds muffled.
What about now?
That's not going to work. Okay, I have another person with their hand raised, I don't have a name for them. I'm going to lower your hand and that will, should let you know that it's your turn to speak. Go ahead. Anyone else out there that wants to speak? If you do, please raise your hand or go ahead and speak.
You want to try Kyle one more time?
Kyle, do you want to try and connect with us?
I'm already...
Kyle, we cannot hear you. I don't know what media you're on, but we can't hear anything.
Any other phone-in speakers? To raise your hand, just press star three.
Okay. Unfortunately, Kyle, we cannot hear you. So, um, your only other option, I think, might be to look on the agenda and if you wanted to phone in instead of trying to do this on the WebEx, that might help. But for right now, we, we can't hear a word.
Lydia, why don't you go back to him one more time and encourage him to speak as loud as he can?
It looks like he disconnected, so he might be trying to call in. I don't have him anymore.
Can you just double-check the list of people that have called? See if he appears anymore?
I, I can't tell.
Okay.
I mean, his name came up before. If anyone would like to speak, raise your hand by pressing star three.
We're not seeing anybody. Okay. Um, so that brings us back to, um, the appellant having, uh, the opportunity to make closing remarks.
Thank you. Um, I'll be quick. Uh, just wanted to say there's a 500-gallon propane tank across City Hall just now. They're in, at each gas station nationwide and in homes all over California, like Eldorado County.
AQMD, um, um, weather station has one in the back of the building, too.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, as far as the volatile nature of it, I'm sure everyone is aware of the science behind that. And I just wanted to state the last, for the last thing is, uh, I want everyone to know this, just personally. It is my family that are, are on the front lines. We are the ones doing the cremations. I've personally done hundreds of cremations myself. My kids lived, uh, next to funeral homes. I bring everything that has been thrown, we bring that home to my kids. I have three healthy kids. Understand this, that we put our families' so-called safety and concerns, we're doing that, just like everyone else, who's a firefighter, who's a police officer, who's anyone that is of the essential business. We did not close during COVID. We are essential to a society. And I understand that it's not a concern of many people. I just wanted to make that clear, um, that a society is bigger than an individual. And I don't want this to come off in the wrong way, but anything asserted without evidence can be refuted without evidence. But thank you for your time again.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the council of our staff? Go ahead, Mike.
Josh, probably this is for you. I think I was asking before the same question. Since February, HTC meeting till last meeting, what are all the things we have done? And you, you listed down a couple of them, that's great. But for HTC meeting, staff is supporting the applicant and recommending to approve after going through the, all the research we have done, including HALAC and, you know, all the research. And some of those, uh, you have added is, those are not the actual research, but the alternate sites and get the clarification from. And now the staff is on the other side, reverse. Just want to understand, uh, what changed other than the city code, which I read there? It was there before, before HTC. And HTC has seen predominantly the SAC County cremation advisory committee recommendation, that's what HTC majority, but what is the staff's side? Why we changed? If you could help us, please?
Josh, I'm going to ask if you can bring this, your presentation back up again, because I'm going to have a question or two about that.
Yeah. And I was following all the factors you have included there. They were there before February and they are there now as well. Yeah, please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so basically from the time the staff report was written, subsequent to the, the staff report being, uh, written and published, the cemetery advisory, um, board did send their, their letter that was after, um, the, the publication. And the commission has to look at not only what the findings of the, um, environmental document were, which is predominantly what staff leaned on for, uh, their conclusions in the, um, in their original staff report for the commission, but at the, the more nebulous, um, factors that have to be determined as part of a conditional use permit finding about the peace and morals and, um, of, of the neighborhood, which as the, uh, the appointed officials for, for the, the Historic District, um, they expressed overwhelmingly with a six to one vote, um, that the findings for the conditional use permit cannot be met. Staff is forwarding, is deferring our, um, is, is forwarding the, um, the commission's decision to council. Uh, we would still stand by the CEQA documentation and the, the conclusions of that documentation, but when it comes to the conditional use permit finding itself, um, we, we defer that, the, the more nebulous parts of those findings to the commission.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make sure, I think, you know, if you can open up the, uh, your recommendation one more time?
Sure.
The last but one page? Yeah.
February, yes, and now as well.
No, it's sorted over, sorry.
So, this was from the...
So this was from the time the staff report was written.
Can we ask the callers on the line to please mute yourselves? We can hear you speaking.
The staff recommendation, sir. The last one.
So this was the commission's finding for denial. Staff did add some additional language to this to reflect the code, which are included here. So it's a bit of a hybrid of the two of them.
Yeah. And before, I think, appellant was made in a comment that out of the 21 crematoriums in our county, majority of them are either government-owned or nonprofit, or one or two or less, the private-owned. Is there a way? I believe you mentioned we have the committee member on the call, if they can help us understand.
Can I just want to clarify something? I don't think that they said that there were 21 crematoriums. That's 21 cemeteries. 21 cemeteries that are privately owned.
No, my point is, maybe I'm messing up the numbers, but in terms of what I heard, historically designated cemeteries in county, majority of them are owned by the government and nonprofit, not the profit-owned companies. That's the statement applicant is making. So is there a way we can get the clarification from the county committee if they are still on the call?
The cemetery advisory commission was given the call-in information and the participation information for tonight's meeting. Staff didn't get a response one way or another as to whether or not they're on the call. So we can certainly see if they're on the line, but we're not positive they are.
Is anyone from the county committee on the call, sir or madam? Okay, I know you probably may not have that one. I'm looking for that answer. I think those are the questions I have, if I come up, I think.
Any other questions for Josh?
No questions.
Can you go back? And I apologize, Josh, I'm not sure which slide it was. It was the list of items that were discussed during the Historic District Commission meeting. Yep, oh, nope, that one, that one. Okay. So of the major concerns that were raised by the Historic District Commissioners.
This is from the public.
I'm sorry, the public.
Yes.
During that hearing. So we've heard a bit from AQMD, and we know that that will require a permit. And we know that there are a number of other locations close by, and I'll point to Green Valley and Rescue, where that crematorium is located in the cemetery that is across the street from an elementary school and a block away from a middle school. I have been to services at that location, so I know how close it is to residential, because frankly, it was far more densely populated in Rescue than I expected it to be. Traffic, the traffic studies have said that there is no traffic issue at this location, that there is no parking issue at this location. And the fire department has indicated that they are not concerned about fire safety. Cultural and archaeological resources, we've heard from about concerns about the existing Chinese cemetery and a reiteration from Sacramento, the Sacramento Cemetery Commission, that they were not going to change their opinion that they submitted 20 years ago, because it wasn't really even a new opinion. It was just that they hadn't changed their opinion from 20 years ago. We've talked, we've heard commentary about economic concerns about property values. It is my understanding that there have.
I have that data if you want it.
That'd be great.
In the last two years, so I pulled public records on the homes. In the last two years of the seven homes, six of them sold over 100% of asking price. The seventh one sold $4,000 less than the asking price, and all seven homes sold within seven days. With the one being on the market one day. So they all sold between one and seven days.
Okay. So those are all important considerations in my thinking about this. So do we have any other questions of staff? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing, or the appeal hearing. Last chance. All right, I'm going to close the appeal hearing. And anybody want to discuss anything? Make some comments?
Just while we're deliberating, would you please put that sign up there that talks about what the conditions we're supposed to find?
Did you want the general one or the one that Historic District came up with that staff added to?
No, the one that he said the council is using.
So this one states that the business or the use will or will not. So this comes directly from the code.
Okay. If you could just leave that up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Would you like a motion in order to focus this discussion?
If you'd like to.
Okay. I am going to move that we deny the appeal and affirm the Historic District Commission's decision to deny the conditional use permit.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
If I may, based on the findings in the staff report on page 477 of your staff report? Councilmember Aquino?
Yes, I'm not, I don't have mine the same way that you do, because I don't, I pull it up by item. So I don't know what page 477 looks like.
So the addition that the staff made is after the welfare of the, the general welfare of the city. In addition is this, because introduction of this use will impact the historical character of the existing cemetery and historical use of the area.
Yes.
Which is the funding made by the commission.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So that is my motion. There's a second?
There's a second.
Okay.
Can I have my hard copy back?
Yeah. And I will just make some comments to kind of support that motion. First of all, this is a very, very difficult public policy decision. And I want to thank the applicant tremendously. I think you have been very professional and non-confrontational. And I don't think there's any question that cremation is a service that is needed. It is one that the majority of us in this room will avail ourselves of at some point. My father was cremated. My husband and I have it in our will to be cremated. And what I think is what's so difficult about this decision is trying, we're trying to strike a balance. We're trying to strike a balance between the rights of one property owner versus the rights of adjacent property owners. We're trying to strike a balance between preserving and honoring history versus accepting progress. We are balancing the rights of the living with the needs of the deceased. And I just think it's, this is a difficult public policy discussion. I do think the Historic District Commission was correct to kind of hone in on the historic and cultural significance of this area and the adjacent areas. And whether it is on a list or not on a list, it is an historic cemetery. And so, again, I think cremation is a service that is needed. But the question before us today is, is an historic cemetery with an adjacent existing neighborhood the correct place for a crematorium? I don't believe it is because of the things that, you know, the historic and cultural sensitivity that the Historic District Commission cited. But I want to say this also. I don't think it's enough to say, like, you know, for the residents to say, hey, we were there first. I don't think that is enough. And this council, and me particularly, you know, we have voted to for developments or, you know, things that change the nature of neighborhoods or landscapes or what have you, right? Nothing is going to stay the same forever, and we get that. But we've all also heard it said that you cannot buy a house next to an airport and complain about airplane noise. And I think that's true, but I think the reverse also has to be true. And that when there is an existing neighborhood, when there is an historic cemetery, you can't come in, obviously, we're not dealing with an airport here, but I think there are some things that just, it applies to also. You know, you can't come in and build an airport after the fact. You can't come in and put a high-rise building next to an existing neighborhood. And in this case, I don't think you can put a crematorium in an historic cemetery next to an adjacent neighborhood. These things that we're dealing with here, the health, safety, peace, morals, comfort, and general welfare, I mean, it is tremendously subjective. Obviously, we can monitor air quality. We can track real estate data. But, you know, there, it's been mentioned before, you know, kind of the ick factor. There are people who would never buy a home next to a cemetery. Obviously, there are a lot of people who do, because they're here in this room tonight. Some don't care if there's a crematorium in the cemetery, some do, just for the same reason that somebody may buy a home knowing that somebody died in that home. To some, it may not matter, you know, if the person was murdered or died by suicide, or to some, it would. So this is very subjective. And I just think because of the Historic District Commission's, like I said, you know, citing the historic and cultural sensitivity here, but also, I just don't think an existing neighborhood in an historic cemetery is the appropriate place. With that said, if this is denied, I do hope our city staff will work with the applicant to find a place where we could have this in the city of Folsom. But perhaps that means we have to, you know, assist in annexing more lands south of 50 or something like that. But I don't think this is the appropriate place for this.
Not sure I can add a whole lot to that, but I seconded this motion specifically so that we would have the opportunity to discuss this a little bit and move the discussion forward. For me, this entire discussion has reminded me of how difficult it is for people to separate two of the things that you mentioned, Sarah, which is the desire to maintain a look and feel of a neighborhood that you're familiar with and the ability to modernize it carefully and sensitively. And I think the point was brought up today earlier that we have, you know, dramatically reworked Sutter Street for three blocks not that long ago, specifically so that all of our neighbors who have mobility impairments can get into and out of those businesses. And that is a radical, radically different look and feel to that street today. And I would challenge you to find anybody that would be really put off by it right now. But at the time, there was a discussion, not too much unlike this one we've been having today, where people were losing their minds over some old, sick trees that were in the middle of that street. They were lovely in their day, but their day came and their day went, and we improved that street, and the Historic District is better for those changes. So I would just caution everyone to think really carefully when we talk about the Historic District, that it was, we've never, we hopefully never will put it completely under a glass dome and try and keep it 100% unchanged. And if we can make sensitive improvements to it when they're necessary and useful, we should. To your point, Sarah, I think probably a different location would be better. But within the Historic District, I would say that there isn't a better location. So this is a situation where we, you know, need to look wider in the city.
Rosario? Any questions, comments?
No questions, comments. I think I have a difference of opinion on this. I think that after visiting Green Valley, you know, if I had not visited, I may have a different opinion, but I visited it. And what I walked away is that in the event this is approved in a few years, residents won't even know that crematoriums are happening in the Historic District at this cemetery. I think this is an ideal place for the crematorium. I think when it came to air quality, you know, just from speaking with the owner, they are audited twice a year where inspections are watched, you know, from inspectors, they watch the crematoriums. Anything that is out of compliance is recorded with the state, anything, anything that's out of whack. State does come in and shut down, which they haven't, but they would if there were too many failures. Some of my other notes, you know, home values, you know, I took some notes from the last comment and just my, you know, I had to go, I had to go back and pull and validate our homes really impacted. But what we find is people still want to live in these areas, and the homes sold quick. You know, getting the feedback from our fire department was probably a very, very important to me, to know that there's safety measures there. Yeah, but I think the site visit two weeks ago really just confirmed it for me that, you know, death is not something we want to experience. But when you look at California and you look at real estate and you look at cost, I think when you look at the overall value to the city residents, having a crematorium here is, to me, a good place to have one. So that's just my opinion.
Anything, Mike?
I probably echo my colleagues. This is one of the difficult item in front of us. We heard residents very loud and clear, all those, all the way to the except end, I agree. But at the same time, I have visited five crematoriums. It's not that I visited. I spoke to the nearby residents as well. I took time, I took time to, couple of hours to stay there and talk to them and walk on the streets and find everybody I can. I definitely agree, when the discussions are happening now, people has that emotions? I agree. Even I asked my wife, she said, no, I can't. So at the same time, I was looking at, with my quasi-judiciary role, I got to think about the entire community besides my city council role. Crematorium burial, in terms of the cost, one is to 10. $1,500 from crematorium, minimum $20,000, $15,000 too. I had to take that into consideration. And the same time, when this was, cost came in year 2000, early 2000s, about 53,000 people in Folsom. Now we are touching 86,000 people, and we have already Folsom plan area designed for another, there are 1,500 homes already, another 10,000 homes, at least another 30,000 people. This city is growing. This is, on this dias, elected officials, the responsibility as well to find services. It's unfair to ship our loved ones to the other places. I was looking at all the, you know, reports. I was putting my science hat as well. That's why I was asking so many questions to Josh. It's not, you know, my intent to put you on an uncomfortable situation. I want to make sure everybody hears. Even the E-Corp third-party agency whom we hired, they are culturally, cultural people, Helix and E-Corp, they partner together culturally and all those. They also said in the report of those 1,370 pages, this probably is the best place. They might have seen the other places also. That's why we hired them. And when I look at all those third- And when I look at all those third-party air quality districts, it's not giving me that feel that that's a bad place. I do agree, the Historic Cemetery Committee, they're consistently making that recommendation. I, I did ask this question, Josh, last time. What are the basis for that? I feel, we think, I was one of the advisory committee member in American River Parkway for Parks County. It doesn't work that way, I think, unless you have a strong base to quote and act like that. That's the city code. So, in that regard, my thought process right now is probably slightly differs my colleagues. I'll wait for the vote. I, I just want to again say, any vote I take, it's going to impact. I, I hear loud and clear my residents. At the same time, I have to speak for 86,000 people in this town and the services this city is providing as well. Okay? With that, I'm going to pause, ma'am. That's my comment, but once the vote comes, we will handle that.
Madam Mayor, if I may interject, may I ask for your indulgence? We have a community member who indicated that she was not able to comment on Webex when she raised her hand, so she is here in person. If you are okay with it, she would like to address the council, provide her comment under three minutes. You don't have to since you have already closed the public hearing.
I'm a little stressed. I was in my pajamas.
We're glad you got dressed.
Me too. Let me compose myself for a moment. I'm Loretta Hettinger, and I'm the Vice President of the Heritage Preservation League. And we would like to transmit to you our concerns. We want you to support the Historic District Commission. We want you to support the revised staff recommendation. The issue is not whether Folsom needs a crematorium. It's not whether Miller is a worthy operator. The issue is the location. And the location is, is wrong for history. And it's wrong for the most impacted neighborhood. It's wrong for your attitude toward history. This is so important to Folsom, so important that I jumped out of my pajamas and into my car to come plead for history. It's what makes Folsom what it is. I find it very difficult to believe that in a community that's more than 25 square miles, you couldn't find another place for a crematorium. There's bound to be a way. I would support finding some other place in Folsom. Of course, it's cheaper for the applicant to do it on property he already owns, but the cost to the neighborhood and the cost to history. I don't claim to speak knowledgeably about Chinese worship practices, but I can only tell you what they have told me, that it is not appropriate to have a crematorium next to the Chenghua Cemetery. And separate and apart from religion, I have a deep concern about a spark. I realize that an accident can happen and a spark can occur from any source. However, why would we add another one? There is no way that this applicant or anyone can guarantee that they won't have an equipment failure or can guarantee that they won't have a spark escape. A, a fire at the Chenghua Cemetery would be disastrous. I sympathize with Igor that he was not able to find code sections that clearly specified.
Loretta, I'm going to need you to wrap up.
Okay. I sympathize with him because I'm frustrated in that regard, too. The Historic Preservation Master Plan was adopted before I was retired, and I've been retired since 2001. It has not yet been updated. It has not yet had any city input into putting details back of the preliminary cultural resource list. The cemetery is on that preliminary cultural resources list, but it's invisible to people like Igor who come in to look for information.
All right, I, I need you to finish.
I will say, thank you. I just hope there was no one else in the same circumstance that I was.
So, sorry about that, Loretta. We don't know what happened, but I've been looking at the screen and there was, you weren't there, there was no hand raised. So, sorry. Sorry, well, but it never showed up on here, Loretta. I'm really sorry. So, thank you for your willingness to change out of your jammies and come on down.
Can I just make one last comment? That, that when we had the ribbon cutting for the air quality monitoring unit, I had asked one of the specialists that was there, would this unit recognize that if some, you know, the air quality that may exceed standards due to something happening, say, with a crematorium? And the answer was yes, it would identify, and it would identify standards that were to go above, or that would exceed standards. So, and, and also residents are able to purchase for a small amount, little apparatuses that, that they can keep in their, you know, like, if I wanted one, I can keep one in my home and it'll tell me what, you know, the air quality is for my home in, and, you know. And so having it get half a mile from the crematorium was another factor for me in my decision-making, so that was it.
Okay. And, and again, I, this is, this is a change. It's a change in, in the way society does things. I think in some cultures, it's not that new, but for me personally, I, you know, didn't expect when I was 15 that, that, that my dad would be cremated, but that was a choice that he made. And a lot of things have changed. I grew up on the East Coast in a very Catholic environment and couldn't imagine a universe where, where somebody would, would be cremated, let alone a Catholic person in my family. But things change. I believe that the air quality, the AQMD does its job very, very well. There are issues about air quality in general in this region of California, but that is largely the result of there not being smog truck program in the Bay Area and the geography and the, and the wind patterns that happen here. So I don't think that, that the presence of a crematorium at the cemetery is going to add one iota to that. There are propane tanks all over Folsom in probably most backyards in the city of Folsom. There's a propane barbecue grill. There's a 250-gallon propane tank behind this building that we noticed during the ribbon cutting for that air quality management district air monitoring, just behind the building here. There are, there are propane tanks located at most of the gas stations in town that are, you know, the locations where everybody that has those backyard propane tanks goes to get their tanks filled. I don't see that as being an issue, and I think if it were, we'd have heard that from the fire department. And so many of the, the, the items that have been brought up tonight and at the last meeting and at the Historic District Commission meeting, I, I just don't believe that those are actually valid concerns. We've heard about real estate values. Rosario talked earlier about her research on, on what actually happened. At the last council meeting, we had somebody talking about sales prices for homes in Yuba City and in South Sacramento. That's not Folsom, and I'm sure that if we looked up the average sales price in Yuba City or Marysville or whatever ZIP code that was in South Sacramento, that it's nowhere near the medium, the median sales price for Folsom and certainly not for this neighborhood. So I, I, I believe this to be almost entirely the ick factor. I, I just don't think that it's going to destroy anybody's lives, and I know people are passionate about it. But, and, and I don't live in the neighborhood, but I, I really don't think that I would have an issue with it. And I've spoken to a lot of other people, not necessarily the people that live right in that neighborhood, but live a couple of blocks away, and they also don't see there being an issue. So, you know, we'll call the question, but that's kind of where I stand on this.
Councilmember Zaccino?
Yes.
Challenge, Chirla?
Before my vote, you, I just want to make one more statement because this is a very complex one. The motion is denying. I heard everybody, and I have a role, again, my city attorney, you know, they always look at, looks at me when I say the quasi-judiciary role, after hearing all the facts, listening to the third-party reports and reading through them and looking at what this city needs. So, again, it's not going to impress anybody. My vote is no to the recommendation.
Councilmember Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
No.
And Hal?
No.
That moves us on to...
Mr. City Attorney, does that affirmative motion need to pass?
So, so the motion failed to deny the appeal. Does the council wish to entertain a different motion that goes to a different outcome?
And, and we have, we have the finding up on the, that is the generic finding out of the code?
And it depends on the council's motion. I might respectfully request the mayor to call for a short recess.
Okay. Would someone like to, are you, are you wanting us to do the recess first? Or are you wanting us to make a decision about whether or not we need some help in crafting language for our finding?
Well, we have, for example, if the council were to float a motion to grant the appeal, which then authorizes the applicant to receive a CUP for the operation, proposed operation, then there are specific findings that the council has to make pertaining to SEQA and pertaining to the project itself.
Okay.
And I'll need to share that with the council.
Okay, so does someone want to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion to get few minutes recess to...
No, that's not what he said.
That's what it is, right?
No. The council would have to take an action to, to, Steve, restate it, please.
To grant the appeal, which means to overturn the Historic District Commission's decision and hence allow the applicant to receive a use permit, conditional use permit for the crematorium.
So the motion is not to have a recess, it would have to be to grant the appeal?
Okay, so let me, should I give this a try? I will motion to, I will motion to grant the appeal and overturn the Historic District Commission's appeal.
Decision.
Decision.
Yes, ma'am. And I can help the council find, tune the findings momentarily.
Right, so do we have a second to that motion?
I have a friendly amendment for the motion. Historic District did make, you know, I, I listened to the Historic District Commission for the five hours, you know, deliberations and all the discussions. Even if this is going for, they were highly recommending adding a weather station kind of and, and apply, apply seriously consider any pipelines. So I just want to put that weather station and some of those ones, low-hanging fruits to this motion.
Yes, they, I was going to do that if it came to this. They asked for a weather station, but also that this go design review.
Design review of Historic District Commission, and those are the points I would like to add to the motion.
So is that a second of the motion?
Yes, with the friendly amendment.
Okay, and...
I accept.
May I request for a short recess, please?
Yes, but don't, don't we need to take this action? Or do you want to, you want to, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so we will give you 10 minutes? Is that 10 minutes' work, Steve?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Turn for 10 minutes.
Madam Mayor, when you are ready, we may, may I request that the council resume the meeting? And staff will assist the council with the council's motion, which is to move to deny the appeal by Igor Semenuk of a decision by the Historic District Commission denying a conditional use permit for the Lakeside Memorial Long's crematorium, project number PN 19-182, located at 1201 Fourth Street, based upon the conditions of appeal in the, in the staff report packet and based upon the following findings, and Director Jones will read the findings into record.
Mr. City Attorney, you said deny the appeal. We already voted on that motion.
I apologize. Move to grant the appeal. I apologize. Move to grant the appeal and thereby overturn the decision of the HDC denying the conditional use permit.
Okay.
Okay. General findings, A, notice of hearing has been given at the time and in the manner required by state law and city code. B, the project is consistent with the general plan and the zoning code of this city. SEQA finding, C, a mitigated negative declaration has been prepared for the project in accordance with SEQA. D, pursuant to AB 52, before release of the mitigated negative, negative declaration for this project, the city contacted all California Native American tribes on the city's AB 52 contact list in association with this project. E, the city received one request for consultation from California Native American tribes and consultation was subsequently concluded. No changes to the project were required as a result of the consultation. F, the city council has considered the initial study, the proposed mitigated negative declaration, and all comments received during the public review process before making a decision regarding the project. G, the mitigated negative declaration reflects the independent judgment and analysis of the city of Folsom. H, the mitigated negative declaration has determined that the proposed project would not have a significant effect on the environment with the required mitigation measures and the conditions of approval on this project. I, on the basis of the whole record, there is no substantial evidence that the project will have a significant effect on the environment with the required mitigation measures and the conditions of approval on the project. Land use compatibility finding, J, as conditioned, the proposed crematory is appropriate as an accessory use to the existing cemetery. Conditional use permit finding, K, as conditioned, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the applied-for use will not, under the circumstances of this particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, peace, morals, comfort, and general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood, or be detrimental or injurious to property and improvements in the neighborhood or to the general, general welfare of the city because the proposed project will not have a negative impact to nearby commercial or residential uses that have not been mitigated. And conditions in your staff report attachment two, starting on page 514, as presented to the Historic District Commission, conditions number one through 30, with the addition of new condition number 31, which comes from the Historic District Commission minutes in attachment five of your report, starting on page 1582. New condition 31 would read, "A Davis Instrument Vantage View. Vantage Pro II or similar weather station shall be installed in the shed on which the crematory machine is proposed prior to installation of the crematorium to the satisfaction of the Community Development Department."
And, and Madam Mayor may also add, if the council were to approve this motion, the council will also be approving the... the council will also be approving the initial study and mitigated negative.
Okay, just to that last, um, condition, um, I, I believe that that particular language came from a discussion that took place in the Historic District Commission initially, but I'd like to get confirmation from AQMD that the stated equipment is actually relevant and appropriate for this use.
You're suggesting that the AQMD caller might be able to confirm that?
Perhaps, if AQMD's still on the line.
Uh, yes, I am still on the line, however, I cannot confirm, uh, that equipment, I'm not familiar with it, and we don't typically require, I should say, I have never seen it required on any projects that, that we, that we have permitted, so.
Okay, and how many other crematoriums have you guys permitted in Sack County?
Uh, I would have to pull up the numbers, but I think we have about 13 or so.
Okay, do you know if you have any air quality monitoring equipment at any of the other crematoriums?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so I think that's something that we may, um, need to have the applicant work with AQMD on, because I know that that equipment is, um, that was proposed by one of the Historic District Commissioners who has experience in, in asphalt plants, but that's, that's why I'm concerned that it may or may not be the right piece of equipment, but...
Well, but I don't think his intent was to have it be air quality monitoring, it's a weather station to, to record which way the wind's blowing, so that when, um, when complaints are made, that, you know, a resident can smell it, they'll be able to go back and see, you know, at this date, at this time, the wind was blowing in this direction at so many miles per hour. That's how, I also listened to the meeting, and that's what I understood, is that what you understood?
That's true.
Okay.
So is that, is that a weather station that automatically collects the data and then transmits it to who?
That I don't know.
It will be used as an evidence when the air quality district comes here, which side is the air blowing, and how the smell is.
Not, not suggesting anything, but if it falls into disrepair, the power gets cut, somebody's not paying attention, and it's not operating, it can't serve that purpose. So the question I have is just, who's responsible for making sure that it is operating?
Got it.
The applicant, and then they need to share the data with the city, make it publicly available, hand over operation to some third party? I, I, I think it's, it's probably useful information, potentially, um, I just don't want to create a, a false expectation for people, is all.
It, it, are we asking there to be an exception to what is normally used in crematoriums when it comes to managing wind and, uh...
Well, they can't manage wind, so, and it sounds, it sounds as if AQMD does not actually know the answer to the question as to whether or not they have any monitoring equipment at any other location within Sack County that is associated with a crematorium.
Yeah, it's one of our HDC commissioners who is very experienced in this area, is recommending to the applicant, please add this one as a request, that way, when the air quality management district comes here, they can use that data. Who is going to monitor whether it is up and running, power, that is probably on the applicant.
Except AQMD doesn't monitor...
They don't.
Wind direction. AQMD monitors air quality.
Yeah.
That's two separate things.
Okay, so we're asking the applicant to install a weather station and maintain the data that it collects?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that a fair request, just, I'm, I'm just curious, well, I, I...
AQMD's not making a request.
Are we making it more difficult to run a, operate a business, and asking them to do something that normally we would not, normally is not utilized by other crematoriums? It just seems we're, we are making it more difficult to be able to operate a business, and, and if, if AQ, if...
Well, AQ, AQ, air quality management district has to, has to issue them a permit.
Yeah.
Right, right. Yeah, that's...
I'm sorry, I just want to make one comment, right, when we put those, you know, professionals are talking, and it's so lucky to have him on the Historic District Commission, and there was a back-and-forth discussion also with applicant, I think applicant came to the dais, and he spoke, I was listening all those on that, and he was expressing his positive answer as per the HDC, that yes, that is doable. I'm just saying what is already recorded in the HDC, what I heard.
Okay.
Which means it's not...
We can, we can add it to that, but I think that, that is more a question, um, maybe for, to get some input from AQMD, or at least have them consider it when they consider the permit, because they have to go to HD, they have to go to AQMD to get a permit to operate the facility, separate from whatever we tell them.
Do we have any other instance where we require a weather station be installed for any other use?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. All right. I, I feel like this is a bit extraneous, honestly, but in spite of the conflict and controversy here, I, I feel like it's extraneous.
And just the, just the conversation even that I had with Green Valley, and really was, and, and YK, uh, ended up showing up at the same time that I showed up, so we asked these questions, and a lot of it was on air quality, and, um, and they, they are audited, they get inspections, they go through, uh, uh, approval process, and so it just seems that we're asking to, you were asking it to be more difficult to be able to operate something that isn't utilized in other areas, and so, and I don't know, who was the commissioner that we were talking about?
John Lane.
Oh, okay.
Uh, he's experienced in that.
Well, his experience is, is, um, with asphalt batch plants. This is not an asphalt batch plant.
So if you want to take the condition off, take it off.
Take it out.
Let's take it off.
The way thinking, he was, he's asking the clients, because they can smell, so that's why he was saying, which side is the air blowing, that's the only thing. I'm okay to take it out, it's at the goodwill of the applicant, whether he wants to install it or not, I'm okay.
That sounds fair.
Okay, so that, that additional condition has been removed?
So just maintaining conditions one through 30, that were part of the original HDC staff report, which is attachment two in your, in your packet, starting on page 514, with no additional conditions.
Okay, any other comments before we call the question?
Councilmembers Zikino?
No.
Challem Charla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
No.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Hal?
Yes.
Would you like a motion and waive the 10:30 rule, Madam Mayor?
Oh, yes.
I will move to waive the 10:30 rule.
One second.
Councilmembers Zikino?
Yes.
Challem Charla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Hal?
Yes. So that moves us to Old Business, item 20.
Old Business, item 20, is resolution number 10831, resolution of the City Council of the City of Folsom, approving an affordable housing loan in the amount of, how much is that, $588,265, no.
No.
$588,265.55 to Bidwell Place LP for construction of the 75 unit, Bidwell Place Affordable Multifamily Project and Appropriation Affairs.
I don't think I ever remember seeing change being added to one of those numbers.
Threw me off. Yeah, we won't do that again.
Please don't.
So, um, good evening, again, Mayor, members of the council, Pam Johns, Community Development Director, um, this item is a request, um, for approval of a second affordable housing loan, um, for the $588,000 and change, $1,000 for, um, essentially a, um, QIMBY fee, and let me, let me take a minute and explain, um, the original project was approved by the, the Planning Commission in May of last year, um, for 75 100% affordable multifamily housing units on a 3.24 acre, um, site, and this is the existing Bank of America site, and the yellow line is actually not representative of the whole parcel, the parcel extends, you know, all, all the way here. There are two asserted parcel numbers on the property, and the assumption was that there were two separate parcels. The project funding and underwriting with tax credits assumed, um, that the apartment project that will be located, uh, here, uh, with access and parking, maintaining the existing Bank of America site separately, um, would be a separate asset that had a 55-year affordability restriction, um, as they have now come through to get, uh...
Ma'am, I'm sorry to interrupt, um, do we have any kind of a scale on that?
Scale on...
Mr. City Attorney, I, I need you to pay attention to this.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have any kind of a scale of distance on this?
I do not see a scale, ma'am.
You mean, what's the size of the, the property, or what's the...
No, I, well, yes, size of the property, any dimension on there would be helpful to me.
Uh, 3.24 acres, um, I...
Any, any dimension?
I'm guessing that...
I'm, I'm asking the question because I have a leasehold at the bottom left-hand corner.
Right here.
And I want to know if I'm more than 500 feet away.
I think you're not, I think that's within 500 feet, because my, uh, and, and with the applicant Artis Ahadani is here from St. Anton, um, maybe you could throw a number to me for the length of the property, is it about 200 feet?
Certainly within 500 feet.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'm going to walk away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor, you have the call.
So, so it turns out it's one property, um, originally the thinking was that it's two, but because of the financing of the property, assuming that this is a separate asset from the future multifamily project, um, they then are required to come in and get a parcel map to create the two separate parcels. Through that process, our municipal code requires that, um, this residential project would be subject to QIMBY fees, and that QIMBY cost equivalent that was not anticipated is $588,000 and change. Um, and so, uh, the applicant came to the city and said, um, could I extend that you've given me an affordable housing loan back in April after the approval of the project in May, um, and that loan was for $4.15 million, um, can I extend that loan for this affordable project and get the additional $588,000 from the city's housing fund to pay the QIMBY fee that is required by your code? And we said, yes, that makes sense. So our recommendation to the City Council is to approve that additional funding, um, that is required by creating a separate parcel, um, here, so that they can proceed with the financing of, of their project, uh, consistent with our original approval.
Thank you, any questions? No, okay, do you need to open up to public comment?
This is not a public hearing, but you may...
Okay, good, thank you for your direction.
Yes, ma'am.
And the applicant is here, if you have any questions as well.
I will move adoption of resolution number 10831.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second, okay.
Okay. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, uh, councilmembers Zikino?
Yes.
Challem Charla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Hal is recused.
Next item is...
Oh, do I need to wait for, do I need to wait for Carrie?
Continue.
Take it away.
Your honor, ma'am.
All right, well, all right, um, next item, uh, ordinance number 1326?
Yeah. Deja vu all over again.
Here we are, here we are again, good evening. Are we going to wait for...
Yep, mayor is coming.
I think that's the right process. My 10 seconds are thin.
Okay, we're good to go?
Yep.
Okay, I'm, uh, Brian Lockhart, and this is deja vu, we've done this once, so I know it's been a long evening, we'll, uh, I'll buzz through this real quick. I'm here to talk about Assembly Bill 481, which is, was signed into law in September of 2021, and the idea behind this was to increase transparency, accountability, and oversight for the acquisition and use of military equipment. I'll get into some slides of what military equipment, uh, actually is. City Council must approve the funding, use, and acquisition by ordinance, and it requires an annual report, uh, that we will submit every year, um, with some different things that I'll get into in a bit, and it also requires us to create a public forum for , uh, community input. So the approval, annual report, the governing body approval requirement, um, this applies to things that are, we already have, um, that we've, uh, purchased before the January of this year. The process must begin before, um, or by May 1st, it began a couple of months ago when we posted things on our website, um, and if it is not approved, this must, uh, we must cease the usage within 180 days. Um, the annual report, I'll get into it in a minute, but it has to, it has to tell how many times we used each of these things, um, if there was any internal audits, and then the feedback and complaints from the community. When we think about military...
I'm sorry to interrupt, but do we actually have to go through the entire presentation again? And if nobody has any questions about it?
I would recommend that we do.
Okay.
Just real, we can, I'm sure that you'll move as quickly as you can.
I'll buzz fast.
Thank you.
Okay, these are the, the things that people think of that are military, we do not have any military surplus things, and, and we are not trying to acquire anything. There's 15 categories, we have eight categories, um, these are a few of the things we have, um, right now, Bearcat drone, a diversion device, and our mobile command center.
By any chance, were you guys flying a drone over the last meeting, out in front of the building?
I, I don't think so, but...
There was, there was a drone right over the door to the building...
Oh, really?
At the last meeting.
That definitely wasn't us.
I, you know, I didn't know if you guys were like playing with the drone while you were in the back of the room, or what was going on.
No.
I went outside, and, you know, I couldn't, I couldn't figure out what this buzzing was, and I walked away from the door, and there was a drone staring down at me.
And that was last meeting?
Last meeting.
Yeah, that, that definitely wasn't us. So here's another, uh, a few, a few things we have, uh, this is what the inventory list looks like, um, and each of those items that we have, it's about 25 or 26 pages long, it looks like this, and has to, uh, have each of these things listed. The reason we need it, there's no other reasonable alternative to be able to bring these things to a safe resolution, and all of this stuff we have is basically being prepared for anything that we face. Everyone's trained on everything we use, um, and, and there are certain things in this quote-unquote military equipment that require specialized training, but everyone has to be trained before they use any sort of equipment that we have. Um, again, we're seeking the adoption, funding doesn't cost anything, all of the equipment we have is currently owned, and we are not currently looking for any more things that fall underneath this category. Timeline, we posted this on our website in March, uh, we had a community event that was, um, we were supported in, read this last time, and here I, and here we are again. Part of this process, there has to be a, a complaint process in order for the community to give their input, we already have that, you can call, you can email, you can, uh, submit something online, there's a bunch of different ways that we can get input. There we are, being supported, and are there any questions?
Very concise.
Yeah.
Get an A for that.
That day, the open house was very good.
Yes.
You know, thank you.
Any questions?
No, ma'am.
No, and if there's no one signed up to speak, I will move the introduction, first reading of ordinance number 1326.
Good, a second?
If you have a motion, a second, call the roll, please.
Could I just ask, Lydia, have you checked the phone line? There is no, well, Matt Kelly is the only person on the phone, and his hand is not raised. Thank you. Okay. Councilmembers Zikino?
Yes.
Challem Charla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Hal?
Yes.
That moves us to item 22.
May I preemptively make a motion that we redouble our efforts and continue to comply with the Brown Act?
We are so serious about complying with the Brown Act, we just redid the entire meeting from last meeting again.
Wow, precisely.
Second.
Okay.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Yep.
YK?
Motion on a second, call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Zikino?
Yes.
Challem Charla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Hal?
That moves us to City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very delighted to share that Folsom was named as one of the nation's top 50 most livable small cities in the United States from personal finance website Smart Asset. Smart Asset analyzed data on 286 cities with populations between 65 and 100,000 residents, considering metrics that included concentration of entertainment establishments, restaurants and healthcare organizations, home affordability, unemployment rate and percentage of, percentage of residents without health insurance. Want to congratulate Folsom's businesses and apartment communities. They have diverted almost three tons of food waste and food soil paper per week from our local landfills. Let's get food waste in its proper place. Learn more about Folsom, Folsom's Organics Recycling Program at www.folsom.ca.us/organics. You may have noticed as you came into City Hall today that we have a ballot drop box location located in the lobby of City Hall through Tuesday, June 7th, which is the date of the primary election and voters may drop off their ballot in the downstairs lobby here during normal business hours. The Folsom Community Center at 52 Nutoma Street next door will host a vote center from Saturday, June 4th through Tuesday, June 7th. At vote centers, individuals can vote, solve voter registration issues, register to vote, get a replacement ballot and receive assistance. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Rosario?
I just have one comment and that was, I really appreciated going on the cap-to-cap trip last week. And what I learned was that it is truly, I think, one of the most, it gave me great perspective about, I think, just being a council member and getting out there and meeting people and learning some of the issues that are happening in the region and how they collectively go and advocate for funding for things that are happening in Sacramento. So I think that this is something that it really should have more support from our council, even Elaine, there were so many city managers there. There was so much that took place. I, I, I just, I came back just so much, I feel so much more prepared as in my role as a council member, having talked to so many people and having just sat down with them, had coffee, dinner. It was, it was a really fantastic trip and I strongly encourage, there were so many cities that had more than three council members attending and I think that if we went, we just split up some of the teams. We don't have dinner, we don't, you know, we just don't, you know, hang out, but it, it, it really can work being out there anyways, that was it.
Just as a point of clarification, there have been times in the past when three council members went on the cap-to-cap trip. So it's not a question of you can't hang out together. It's really an issue that you cannot discuss city business that will ultimately come before the council.
Sure. That's why I say, where I said to even just like not.
No, I'm, I'm just going to point out that there have been many, many instances in the past when multiple members of this council have been at various events that don't directly relate to city council, including the Rotary Club meetings. There's, you know, been a very, very long list. So it's just a question of keeping, the council members keeping in mind that there are things that we can talk about when we're seeing each other in a social setting or in a lobbying situation like that. And I don't know that we've ever had three people that, I know we've never had three people that were on the same team.
Are you suggesting we comply with the Brown Act?
Yet again, it's just a question of, you know, complying with the Brown Act, which we do routinely. So, but I agree that having been on that trip many, many times, I think it, you are correct, it is especially helpful for people that, like yourself, that has, haven't been through that experience before and it's a good opportunity to get to know other elected officials, other stakeholders in the region in a, in a setting that's a little bit more conducive to, to having a little bit more personal interaction than going to a meeting that lasts for an hour downtown and you don't know anything about the person other than how they voted on that issue, on that regional commission or committee, whatever it might be. So I, you know, YK, I think at some future point you should, you should go as well. I think Sarah, you've been, have you?
Sure, ma'am.
Or have you not? No, that's right, because after, right after you guys got elected, the pandemic started, so.
Sat on, they go next time.
No, because it, it hasn't happened in a couple of years, so. But I'm also happy to hear that you're one of the people that came back unscathed by COVID because a number of individuals that were on that trip did test positive when they got back. Because we're, we had a problem actually at the, for the RT board meeting last night, making sure that we had a quorum. So, YK?
Good, are you good?
I'm done.
Good. Earlier this week, we had a school board and city council two-by-two meeting. Think they were, they're all, you know, looking forward for Benevento Park, how many parking spots kids can park? We said, yep, we are considering and we will get there soon, but they're very optimistic. And we said, yep, we'll work on that one. That's a great one. Other than that, there is nothing major on the school to, school board, city council two-by-two. And I also attended the Golden State, the Regional Scouts Council. There is 130 scouts are there in Sac, in, you know, Hyatt and I'm trying to encourage the scouts and youths to participate in the city, you know, upcoming community service days and block some projects. We are almost there to release the projects and everything. So I'm trying to advocate to get more people. And also from tomorrow till Friday, I'm attending the city leadership summit in SAC downtown. I believe, I think my colleague Mike is joining me. One thing I want to talk, I was looking at Mark, at noon time at the Capitol, all the leaders are going to talk about that organic waste, how city can help us. Sorry, how states, state can help us. So I'll be there with the, you know, red flag and saying, how, money more, please? Because they're giving all those, but they're not supporting us financially. It's very hard and we are passing that on residents. And the last one, but not least, I think I'm going to advocate more on the City Works Day, May 18th. I'll try my best through the school board, see whether we can populate to all the school kids and that they can come to our City Works Day on May 18th. That's all, Folsom, good night. I just want to thank, you know, Pam and your team and everybody who helped this very critical meeting today. And it is very important, I want to sincerely thank all our city staff members here. Thank you.
Mike?
We had the Policy and Innovation Committee on, meeting on Monday. At Secog, yeah. And we had an interesting presentation on, from our legislative analyst for Secog about a whole series of bills that have been proposed in the California Legislature to modify AB375, or AB 32, AB 375, which is the carbon reduction goals for the state. And there's some general recognition that as things stand right now, we can't, the state can't meet its goals. So there's a whole series of bits of legislation winding their way through to try and improve the chances of that happening. More news as those, you know, sort of percolate, but just wanted to give you all a heads up that that seems to be a important topic bouncing around the state Capitol. And aside from that, I have no report.
You're not going to report on the track meet?
The Vista Del Lago Track Team last week, the boys won the varsity league championship for the eighth consecutive year.
Awesome, go Vista Eagles.
So, construction continues along our segment of the connector. So all is good there. Mark, I'm going to make one more request. We need to sit down and have a meeting to talk about the, the rail-related stuff on that and separate discussion about some different rail-related stuff that I need to talk to you about. And thirdly, about what we're going to do about getting the, that dry vial at, at the post office turned around. While we have a, while we have a postmaster that supports it. And right now that looks like the, the post office isn't doing much lawn mowing over there, so now might be a good time. RT board meeting last night. There was approval given for conversion of part of the Roseville Road Light Rail Station parking lot to be converted into a safe place for homeless folks to live. I was a little bit surprised that came as a result of renegotiations between RT and the City of Sacramento about what that safe space was going to look like and who is going to provide law enforcement services over there. I was kind of surprised that they actually came to some agreement, but if anybody saw that on the news or hears about it in the future, I am confident that if anybody's concerned about that happening at a light rail parking lot in Folsom, that would not be the case because the Roseville Road Station parking lot was vastly underutilized and that is not the case at any of the light rail parking lots in Folsom. So there's nothing to be concerned about. I don't think anybody's going to be making a proposal to do anything like that here. Regional SAN is tomorrow, but things are going well at Regional SAN, so I don't know that there will be an issue there or anything that we need to be concerned about. I did not do a lot of driving today. I came from my house to here, went to, over by, I went to Save Credit Union and back home and then here again. And so that's very little driving and I'm, I think I saw eight cars running red lights today. That was, I probably only went through eight intersections that had lights. So people are continuing to drive like maniacs. They're speeding, they're running red lights, so please drive carefully so that, you know, Folsom Fire isn't, doesn't have to respond to the car accident that, that you were in because you either jumped on the light or you caused the accident by running the red light or the stop sign or speeding. So with that, I hope everybody had a happy Mother's Day and we are adjourned at 10:44.